So we'll call this meeting of December 3rd of the County Commissioners to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. But before I do that, I want to let everyone know that the following the mission statement are all the do's and don'ts, rules for submitting public comment, and who to contact, and all the websites. Now we'll go back to the Pledge of Allegiance being led by the County Manager, Mr. Patrick Kates.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Want to welcome everybody to the meeting. And let the record reflect that all five County Commissioners are here. So now we'll talk about public comment. Public comment cards and comments left on the county's website prior to the board meeting have been compiled and made a part of supporting materials. They've been provided to the County Commissioners and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during this meeting. Once at the beginning of the board meeting and again at the end of the meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Once a public comment period has been opened, public comment will be heard by leaving a voice message on Douglas County's public comment phone line, 775-783-6007. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played during each public comment period. Douglas County's public comment phone line became available to take public comment at 1:00 p.m. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call, or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's public comment phone line. The Board wants to encourage respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any voicemail is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of others, the voice message will be skipped to the next public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Ms. Wood, do we have public comment?
Yes, sir. Natalie Wood, for the record, I have one so far. I will start playing it.
Thank you very much.
Lynn Muzzi, M-U-Z-Z-Y. I'm calling in to express my opposition to approval of community development agenda items five and six. Dan Muzzi's letter to the editor today points out that the developer community provided Mark Gardner the opportunity to win his commissioner race with two landslide victories and by themselves, two landslide losses. After months of very expensive political messaging and a thorough airing of the issues at stake, it's safe to say your constituents have had it with more residential construction, more traffic congestion, more rooftops, more loss of open space, more strain on our water supply. Honest politicians would incorporate this sort of guidance from these voting choices into their government. But these community development applicants, and I'm sure others to come, expect the current board majority delivered for them right up to the last page.
Okay, that's the only one received so far. I do know that we have one coming in. We had a call that they got cut off, so we deleted it, and they have, they're probably still leaving the message.
We'll wait for that to complete.
We'll start playing it.
Okay, thank you.
Tim Slade. On item number five, the proposed master plan amendment for the 40-acre parcel on East Valley Road, as to consistency with policies in the master plan, intent of the portion land range land use said that necessitates maintain the resource and open space. East Valley Community Plan has two key issues, maintain rural character and open space preservation. This proposed action would do just opposite. On demonstrated need, there are over 7,000 homes currently be built in Douglas County in approved developments when Park Ranch's 2,500 are included. To say there's a demonstrated need for more at this point is absurd. Applicants claim that in East Valley, with a size between nine and 9.99 acre, there are only seven undeveloped parks. Their focus is so narrow as to be enveloping. You need to take a broader view. To many, the entire valley is the area that should be considered. On compatibility with actual master plant use in the adjacent properties, staff states that a different land use lies to the west of the site, but is different outside of the East Valley plan, without mentioning that the use is agricultural and that the adjacent property to the west was in East Valley Community Plan until it changed to Central Ag earlier this year. They also state that the land to the north is receiving area, but there's no guarantee whatsoever that that portion of the receiving area will ever be developed. The actual use of the adjacent property to the west is agricultural, and to the north, agence. Staff often likes to expand that discussion to include nearby properties, but didn't this time. Of the properties within 3,000 feet of the subject parcel, 23 of 40 acres and larger, but only three having any greater density, all with about 10-acre lots. See the map on page 793. The applicants of the October Planning Commission meeting have stated due to their agents, they can no longer maintain their land. Planning Commissioner Casey stated that she has been by the property and that, quote, "It doesn't look like it's ever been maintained for anything other than safe, fresh, and rabbit fresh." Not being able to maintain the land is no reason to grant a master plan amendment. Reality no doubt is that they just want to make more money when they sell the land, which is no reason to grant an amendment either. This application does not meet the required findings for a master plan amendment. You should follow staff's recommendations for denial. On item number six, Ashland Park, SFR 8,000 throughout this project would violate the precept of having a transition to the zoning of adjacent properties. To the east, the zoning is RA5. The zoning in Ashland Park should transition from SFR 8,000 in the west to SFR 2 in the east. Having SFR 8,000 throughout would violate principles in the master plan. This item needs to be continued and a new proposal brought forward.
At the beginning of the board meeting, and it's in the public comment panel, it's one of the speakers. Once a public comment period has been opened, public comment was turned by a B.
Okay, that was the last one received at 1:05 p.m.
We'll leave it open for another five minutes until 1:10. Have you received any more public comment, Ms. Wood?
Natalie Wood, for the record, no, sir. No additional public comment have been received.
Thank you, ma'am. In that case, we'll close opening public comment. We'll move on to the agenda while we're still taking public comment for closing public comment. So we're looking for approval of the agenda. Do any of the board members wish to pull any agenda items? Seeing no hands raised. I can't see the hand of Mr. Rice. Having said that, I'm looking for approval of the agenda.
I would move to approve the December 3rd, 2020 Agenda of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second. So a motion by Commissioner Nelson, a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? The motion carries. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items A through I, anyone wish to pull any item on the consent agenda? Seeing no hands raised, then we'll be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda items A through I as presented.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by, I think Commissioner Nelson got in before you, sir. So we have the second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor of the consent agenda approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? Motion carries, 5-0. We move on to the administrative calendar. And with number one, we'll read into the record. For presentation-only update from the County Manager and Director of Carson City Health and Human Services regarding COVID-19 pandemic and public health response to the Douglas County and Quad County regions, Mr. Kates and Ms. Freeman. Who's leading on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Patrick Kates, for the record. I'm, I'll give a little bit of an intro before I turn it over to Jeanne Freeman. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. Really quick update on CARES Act funding. I'll bring back a full report at our next meeting, but I just want to inform the board that I've been in communication with NV Energy. They are going through a process of shutting off power to accounts that are in arrears for people that have been impacted by COVID. They've gone through a process to vet past due accounts for people that are affected by COVID versus those who are not. And we're working with them as some other counties, including Carson City and Lyon County, to pay those arrear accounts. The total that they gave me, it was 301 accounts in arrears related to COVID totaling just under $76,000. I've expressed an interest and willingness to have the county use some CARES Act funding to make those accounts whole for those Douglas County residents. And we're working back and forth on the details. They're going to give us their documentation, and once we make a determination that everything is in order, we're willing to cover those accounts. I also sent some material earlier today to the board members that should be uploaded with the final supplemental package for this meeting for the public to review. I wasn't going to go over many detail, just refer to them. There is a flyer on Quad County testing events for the month of December. There's approximately two testing events per week. Any Douglas County resident can go to any Quad County testing event. The next one, actually in Douglas County, is at East Fork Fire Station Number Seven in Gardnerville on December the 22nd. I also provided a flyer on the COVID contact tracing app promoted by the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services. There was also a press release from Carson City Health and Human Services. I also included the most recent White House report that just came out on Nevada. It's got a lot of interesting charts in it. They clearly show sharp increases in overall infections as well as the rate of infections. There's a really good chart there that shows the impact on hospitals and how, how many people they're admitting with COVID, and it has increased pretty dramatically recently. There's also a written report from Carson City Health and Human Services regarding COVID surveillance. And if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to go through it. I wanted to turn and talk just a little bit about Carson City Health and Human Services. We are part of the Quad County Healthcare Coalition. That includes Carson City, Douglas County, Story County, and Lyon County. And we contract with Carson City Health and Human Services to provide public health services. That includes public health disaster plan development, public health emergency community assessment, disease investigations and contact tracing, with regular updates to the county health officer, isolation and quarantine in collaboration with the county district attorney and district court, testing for and surveillance of disease in the community, vaccination and medication distribution as recommended by healthcare providers, and in consultation with the county health officer, collaboration with county emergency management on the development and implementation of any plan regarding public health emergencies. So I'm really happy to have Jeanne Freeman with us today, the Quad County Public Health Preparedness Manager, to kind of give you an overview of where we stand with COVID in the county and the Quad County region.
Thank you, Mr. Kates. Welcome, Ms. Freeman.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. It has been several months since I have been with you and talked about the situation with COVID. Would have been nice if, when we got together several months ago, we wouldn't need to have this conversation today with where we are across the state. As Mr. Kates indicated, there are a variety of reports that are out there. The state puts out numerous reports. We put out reports. The White House puts out reports. And all of them indicate and show the increase in the number of COVID cases that are occurring across the state of Nevada. As of Monday, there was only one county that hasn't been flagged for increased disease transmission, and that is Story County. Douglas County has been seeing an increase in the number of COVID cases. Over the last month and a half, we've seen that number creeping up, and then it jumped up rather quickly, similar to other counties within the Quad Region, starting on November 13th to November 19th. We saw well over 1,100 cases that came in in that very short period of time. When we were used to seeing about 50 to 60 a day, all of a sudden, we were seeing days of 150, with one day in particular where we saw 345. And those were not connected to any of the correctional facilities that have been part of the media information that's been coming out as of late, too. When we look at those cases, what's generally what we see even across the country and other states is that when we have an increase in COVID cases, a couple of weeks later, we see that spike and that increase in our healthcare system. And then a short period after that, usually about a week and a half to two weeks later, we see an increase in the number of deaths that happen as a result. And we're starting to see that. We saw that down in Clark County several months ago when they were having high rates in their cases. We saw their hospitalizations increase, and then we saw the deaths increase. Now, northern Nevada is actually experiencing a spike that is growing farther and faster than what's been, has experienced in the past. So now we are seeing the taxation on our healthcare system in northern Nevada. And what happens in Douglas County doesn't just impact Carson Valley Medical Center, it impacts Carson Tahoe Hospital, and then it also impacts the hospitals in Washoe County. And so, for example, the alternate care site that sits at Renown Regional Medical Center, our Level Two Trauma Center in northern Nevada, our patients end up being potentially transferred there as well. We work closely with Carson Tahoe Hospital, and we also work closely with Carson Valley Medical Center. A couple of weeks ago, we partnered with Carson Valley Medical Center, and we moved the inflatable mobile medical facility out to their warehouse, and that was set up with a collaboration with Emergency Management, East Fork Fire, and Carson Valley Medical Center, so that they have the capacity to have additional beds and space to be able to support the influx of patients that they have been reporting that they've been seeing. As you know, we continue to do testing. One of the things that we are excited about for Douglas County, as well as the other Quad Counties, is that of the three criteria that the mitigation task force uses, all four of the counties are actually meeting what the testing expectations are. And in the past, that had been an area that multiple of the Quad Counties had been flagged for not meeting. Keep in mind, Carson City Health and Human Services, while we do come into Douglas County and provide testing opportunities, we are not the sole testing entity within your county. Private providers are doing PCR tests and sending them out to different private labs or to the state lab. The hospital is doing a lot of testing as well. So when we look at the overall tests that are coming out of Douglas County, they're not just happening at those community-based testing events. One of the things that is actually beneficial about the testing that we do through Carson City Health and Human Services and your Quad County Preparedness Team is that we still test asymptomatic individuals, and that becomes very important for the overall positivity rate in the county. If we were to only test those who are symptomatic, the positivity rate would be higher because if they're symptomatic, we would anticipate that more of them would show up positive than looking at what that community would be for asymptomatic as well. So it's important for us to make sure that we continue to test the asymptomatic as well as the symptomatic, so that we can have a more accurate reflection of what is going on in the community as far as COVID. We do know that we have a number of people who have had COVID. In fact, I'm reporting to you today from my own home because I have multiple symptoms, and I am waiting for my PCR test to come back as to whether or not I am a COVID patient. So one of the things that becomes important is that we're able to model what that looks like. When the community doesn't feel well and they're able to stay home, that really helps a lot. We have done a lot of work with the school district and the county health officer, Dr. Holman. Superintendent Keith Lewis has been instrumental and been a wonderful, wonderful partner as we've been moving forward with this over these months since August when school started. And that collaboration and us being able to do those disease investigations with the school and the school district has been powerful to help keep those numbers down and to help keep students out of school who are positive or who are close contacts, so that we can make sure that we don't end up with outbreaks in the school. So it's been great to be able to have the school district be alongside of us. We have weekly calls with them and the other school districts in the four counties, as well as the private schools. So we continue to work with them. There is a lot of information that is coming out about the vaccine, but before I talk about the vaccine, I'd like to give you an opportunity to ask me any questions that you may have about testing before I move into the vaccine.
Any testing questions, gentlemen? Seeing none, go ahead with your discussion on vaccine.
Thank you, sir. All right, so the COVID vaccine is a hot topic. There's a lot of interest associated with it, a lot of questions about it. One of the things for you to know is that over 200 vaccines are currently under some level of investigation when it comes to COVID. And there's a variety of different technologies that are being used. The two vaccines right now that are on the forefront or the farthest along are the Pfizer vaccine. They petitioned the federal government to have emergency use authorization, and that will be voted on next week. And then Moderna, which is the vaccine developed out of a company out of Las Vegas, they petitioned for emergency use authorization, and they will be voted on the following week. We do know that the western states have a pact where they will be reviewing, they have a panel of scientists who will be reviewing the science beyond what the federal government has done before they give their approval. And we know that they will be meeting on December 12th to give their review of the data, and upon their approval, we anticipate the Pfizer vaccine being delivered to the state of Nevada starting the week of December 14th. The state of Nevada put together a 104-page playbook related to vaccine rollout and the different tiers in alignment with what the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention had put forward. The CDC met earlier this week on Tuesday and voted on who is to be prioritized, and that changed a little bit on the state's playbook. So the state put out a revised playbook yesterday, and that is available on the Department of Health and Human Services website. We have been collaborating for about eight weeks now with the state and local partners to identify who those tiers are to get the vaccine first and how we will be rolling that out. We have been purchasing supplies since July to make sure that we had all of the supplies we would need, syringes and needles and Band-Aids and everything like that in place so that we would be able to vaccinate. And right now, there is a national shortage of many of those supplies, but we made sure that we had enough so that we'd be able to support the Quad County region. We have worked closely with Carson Valley Medical Center. We are currently calling all healthcare providers who have private offices and medical care offices. We are currently calling all healthcare providers, um, who are, have private offices and medical care offices and asking them about their interest in taking up the vaccine. We held a call last week with the first responder agencies, including those from Douglas County, so Tahoe Douglas Fire, the Sheriff's Office, as well as East Fork Fire, and talked with them about their interest in taking up the vaccine, their staff's interest. And we have different calendars that we're putting out. The vaccine is a, currently both vaccines that are going for emergency approval are two-shot vaccines. So you get one, and then either twenty-one or twenty-eight days later, depending on the product, you get the second one. There are people who will experience some COVID-like symptoms associated with the vaccine. It is impossible from these two vaccines to get COVID because there is nothing, there are no viral particles of COVID in the vaccine, so it is not possible to get the, um, virus. You can experience symptoms associated with it, which was, uh, which is actually a good thing. That's an indication that your immune system is responding and building up those antibodies related to that. But the vaccine is one of those things that, um, they're using a messenger RNA technology, and according to the science, it's about ninety-five percent effective in helping people build those antibodies to help protect. What we don't know is we don't know how long that vaccine is going to last in the sense that we don't know how long those antibodies are going to last. We don't know if it's going to be something that you have to get a shot every year, like we encourage with the flu shot, or if it's going to be something that the antibodies will last for two years or five years. We're unsure at this point in time. That will be science that continues to come out as they continue to do studies on the vaccine. Um, I know there's a lot of questions about safety and about efficacy, and we are still waiting for some of that science to be released and for the American Council for Immunization Practices to meet and give that information. We do know that when it comes out, because it has not been studied on pregnant women, it will not be approved for pregnant women. We also know that because it has not been studied on children that we, um, under a certain age, that it won't be approved for children under a certain age, depending on the product. And so there are, there are going to be some things that are going to have to wait. The tier one folks who are going to be getting that vaccine first are going to be our frontline healthcare providers, our first responders, and those who are residents of long-term care facilities, since we have seen a variety of outbreaks in those facilities and many deaths in those types of facilities. And then tier two will be other critical infrastructure, uh, individuals and other essential workers, and the state is still doing some additional definitions about what those, um, entities include. And we know that for the general public, we're looking at a, uh, probably a mid-to-late spring rollout for the general public. It will all depend on how much vaccine is able to be manufactured, and it will depend on what the uptake is of the vaccine for those first two tiers of individuals. So if those in tier one choose that they don't want to have the vaccine and they refuse the vaccine, those vaccine doses get pushed to tier two. And if those tiers, uh, refuse, then they will push additional um, vaccine out to the public and it'll come out to the public sooner. So it will depend on what the uptake is and how the manufacturing of the vaccine goes. The long-term care and skilled nursing facilities in Douglas County have all signed up with the pharmacy program with the federal government. So Walgreens and CVS pharmacies have worked with the federal government to make the vaccine available and to go into long-term care and skilled nursing facilities to vaccinate all their staff and all their residents. And every single one of the skilled nursing and long-term care facilities in Douglas County have signed up with that program. So they, um, will be ready to go with that staffing. So when we look at the Quad County region, our tier one numbers that we have been given for your Quad County Public Health Preparedness Team is for us to vaccinate a little over fourteen thousand people within the first eight weeks. So we will be rather busy in addition to making sure that we are still providing the customer service when it comes to the testing options for the community as well. So questions that I can answer for you about vaccination?
Questions, gentlemen? No questions.
Okay, do you have questions for me about anything else?
Commissioner Ingles. You're still muted, John.
Okay. Um, Ms. Freeman, Nate, has, has there been a, been any, uh, discussion in regard to, uh, what's accounting for all of this spike in Douglas County? Uh, it seems like right around Thanksgiving time, and I'm assuming all the Quad Counties are in the same situation. Is, has anybody got any ideas about that? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much for your question, sir. Uh, when we look at what's happening, you know, those numbers started showing up just a little bit before Thanksgiving. Um, but we're going to see those numbers be a reflection of what was happening near the end of October. So usually when we start to see those numbers increase, we're looking at what was occurring the two weeks beforehand. And, um, yet we still see that the vast majority of people report that they're getting it from somebody that they know who was positive or somebody within their household. And so, uh, we do, we do continue to hear from folks that about almost fifty-five to sixty percent of people are going to work while they're sick and they were symptomatic. Um, they were waiting for a test before they were deciding whether or not to stay home. And so if you've got somebody who's sick at work, then it tends to spread. And then in a household, if you can't isolate away from your other household members, then you have the increased risk of having the entire household get sick. And so then a household of four has the chance of getting that. That was one of the things that in my own household, um, we had one of my family members who contracted COVID, and we all had to isolate away from that person as a way to try to keep us from getting it as well. And the others in our household were, did not get the, uh, did not get COVID nineteen because we were able to do that isolation. And that's one of those messages that's very important that if somebody in your house tests positive or somebody in your house is sick, do the very best you can to isolate away from them and keep your distance and stuff so that they can have their own space to keep your, uh, the rest of your family as healthy as possible.
Um, Ms. Freeman, if there are no other questions. Uh, Mr. Ingles, did you have another question?
Uh, yes, this would be directed towards, uh, Mr. Gates. Um, Mr. Case, when Ferguson was here, we used to get a, like a, uh, a little chart in our emails with all of the counties and the cases and recoveries and so forth. Um, it was real handy to look at that, and, uh, that's not being used anymore. Is, could you revise that and use that chart? I guess Amy would be the one who's involved with that.
Um, let me-
Put out by, uh, Todd Carlini, Chief.
Carlini, uh, somebody. I don't know who's doing it.
Yeah. You should be getting it. You're not getting it, John?
I'm getting, I'm getting a, I'm getting the results, but remember when Ferguson was doing it, we had like a-
Yeah. But that chart is, that's still coming out.
Is it? Well, pay more attention now.
Sir, if I could, um, uh, the material that I sent this morning, that was sent by Amy Ray uh, last night, and in, in one of the attachments, it has that data. I know when Ferguson was doing it, he used to put a lot more information in the body of the email. Um, I know it's been a challenge for East Fork to fill his shoes. Um, they have hired a replacement for him. I haven't met him yet, but, um, uh, hopefully the communication will improve, but it, it is now an, an attachment. So if you take a look at that, if that's not what you're looking for, let me know.
Okay.
Don, I think it's the fourth attachment, the one we just got.
All right. Yeah. Uh, one came in. I'll check it later.
Okay.
Commissioner Walsh, did you have a question?
Yeah, yes, I did. Uh, actually referred to the chart that, that John just mentioned. Uh, I got that this morning, and, and it shows that, uh, since the start of COVID, we've had one thousand and eighty active cases, five hundred and something recoveries, and I think five deaths. But in the chart that I showed, um, or that I saw last week, yeah, that's it. Uh, in the, in the, uh, in the chart I saw the other day, uh, the state reported that we had nine hundred and eighty-six new cases uh, in the last thirty days. How do you reconcile that?
Well, the numbers have absolutely, they've skyrocketed in Douglas County. I mean, that's, that's a given. Um, when we look at the number that's there, we, you know, one of the things that we are really very conscientious of is that the state gets their numbers from the numbers that we report into them, and we're very careful to make sure that, uh, because there are people in our community who go and they'll be tested at one location, and then the next day they'll go be tested at another location, and the next day they'll go be tested at a local pharmacy. And so we make sure that we are not duplicating, uh, individuals who are testing positive. We make sure that we de-duplicate anything that comes in, because there are times that duplicates come in from the state lab when it comes to those results. But we want to make sure that we're, um, getting those reports in place. There are a variety of different tests that are run in the community, and it's important for the public and for everyone on the call to understand that the PCR test or that polymerase chain reaction test is considered the gold standard. That is the test that is run by the state lab or the Quest and uh, Core and other testing entities that they run. And that is the one that has the greatest accuracy when it comes to identifying a positive. There are a variety of rapid tests that are out there, and, um, most of them are antigen-based tests. And those antigen-based tests have a variety of inaccuracies. And so when we look at them, the state has put out their guidance that an antigen test in and of itself, if it comes up positive, is not to be counted in the local numbers. That antigen test is to be, if it comes up positive, is to have a follow-up PCR test done so that it can be confirmed. And if the PCR test comes back negative and the antigen was positive, the PCR test is the one that stands. If the antigen test comes back negative and the PCR comes back positive, the anti, the PCR test stands. And if they're both positive, then that chance is that they both were accurate at that point in time. But the PCR is considered the accurate test, and that is the one that we go with. Um, as far as those numbers, those numbers continue to increase. Um, and keep in mind that when it comes to the number of tests that gets reported with the state, we also get in, uh, information from other states that come to us that are not always as timely as we'd like them to be of our Douglas County residents or our Quad County residents that were tested in other locations and tested positive in those locations. But those test positivities, they count towards our county even if they were tested in another state because those individuals listed their county of residence as Douglas County, Nevada. So all of those numbers come in from a variety of different directions. And so you're going to see that at times those numbers are going to go up rapidly, and then other times they're going to go down or not be as high as they were on a previous date. Related to the deaths, the deaths have been a challenge. Um, we do not report a death, we are not allowed to report a death until we have a signed death notification. And we are not the entity that has the legal authority to sign. Those things get signed by a supervising physician in a hospital or in a long-term care facility. If they're at home, they get signed by a coroner. They, there's a variety of different people who get to sign those. We do not. So we do not report a COVID death until we have a death notification that has that signature on it. It's important for the public to understand because we want to make sure that we are not make some sort of assumption that somebody died of COVID unless we have that notification from somebody who has the legal authority to make that signature. We don't do that on our own. And sometimes those come in timely, and sometimes they don't.
Well, I don't want to downplay the importance of, of, of testing and, and the seriousness of this, this entire issue, but I get a lot of calls from my constituents. Uh, and, um, you know, we've had five deaths in Douglas County. Uh, and as a percentage of our population, that's less than zero, zero to one point six percent, which is almost immeasurable. We never hear about that. Okay, and I'm not saying that it, it's, it's not a ser-, it is a serious issue, okay? But people are scared because they think people are dying all over the place, and they're not. Uh, and, and, and again, those numbers that we got from the state the other day that showed us at a twenty-eight percent positivity rate or whatever it was, okay, nine hundred and eighty-six cases in the last thirty days, I think they're not right. But anyhow, that's just my-
Yeah, so I think it's important to understand that nine hundred and eighty-six cases in the last thirty days, they're looking at what the case, what the case count would be if it's per one hundred thousand. And so when they're doing that math, they're looking at it, and they have to do a per one hundred thousand so that they can do an equalization between counties because population is different. Well, Douglas County has a population of about fifty-five thousand, right? So our number was, well, less than nine hundred and eighty-six, but if they were to put it on an equal playing field of every county being at a hundred thousand people, then what would that number look like? And that's why that number is there. But it does, I agree with you that statistics are useful, but if they're not put into some sort of context in a, a context that makes sense, then that becomes, that becomes confusing. It becomes confusing to me. It can become confusing to others. But that's basically what you would be looking at is if Douglas County's population was almost double of what it is, then we would have expected to have seen about nine hundred and eighty-six people who contracted COVID in the thirty-day period prior to, um, that date. That wasn't the actual number that we had, but it would have been if we were at a population of a hundred thousand in our county.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Commissioner Rice.
I, I understand that, uh, the CDC has, uh, reduced the, um, quarantine ti- time from fourteen days to almost cutting it in half. Is, is that correct information?
Yes and no. So, uh, yesterday, the, I should say, earlier this week, I think it was either Monday or Tuesday, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, uh, voted in order to reduce the recommendation for quarantine for those who have COVID nineteen. Uh, we have, we waited, and the state yesterday put out their technical bulletin about, uh, following what the CDC's recommendation was. So what we know is that most people, when they have had contact with somebody who is COVID-positive and they're considered a close contact, that they start to show symptoms within three to five days of that close contact. So what the CDC did is they said, instead of as a close contact automatically being quarantined for fourteen days, we will reduce the number of days of quarantine to ten unless the person is able to test after five days from their last contact of that positive to them. So five days after, negative result by seven days, then they can be removed from quarantine at seven days. Unfortunately, when it comes to the testing capacity and the ability to get a test result back, if we were to test somebody at five days after their last contact, we will get their test result back right about day ten. So that's when they're going to get notified. So yes, it has been reduced from fourteen days down to ten. That's the general recommendation. But when it comes, if they're able to get a test, and there are locations up in Reno and so forth that do those tests, and they have the ability to run those tests and get you a result back in two or three days, rather than the state lab taking about five to six days, then, um, you can get that result fa- faster, and we can get that result, and we can release somebody from that quarantine period. But they did make that reduction, and that did come out in a technical bulletin yesterday from the state encouraging all of the local health authorities to follow that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Um, you, you just discussed a particular issue. Um, the quarantining, um, is imprecise at best. Uh, and the release from quarantining is also imprecise. Um, the, the feedback I get from seniors, which I am a huge member of, um, they, they, they talk about, you know, I don't want to go, uh, and get tested because I have to wait in uh, isolation for a certain period of time. And so I'm just going to wait until I show symptoms, and then I'm going to go get tested. How do we overcome that since thirty-five percent of our, our population is over fifty-five and twenty-five percent of that is over seventy-five, you know, they're Medicare-eligible? We have a huge population that is shy to take the test because of the quarantining issue. To me, that means that we need to reduce the time it takes from the test to the rendering of the decision on it. And what, what kind of steps are we taking to do that?
So you have, you have a great question, and you have lots of different pieces associated with that. So let me talk to you about that testing piece and what that would look like. We don't want people to shy away from being tested, obviously. Um, if they were a close contact with somebody who, uh, was positive, we want them to get tested. Generally, we recommend them being tested even if they are asymptomatic about day four or five after their contact with that person who was considered a positive. When it comes to their test result, we ask them that if they have any symptoms that they should stay home. If they're a close contact and they were identified in that investigative process, then they would have already been told to stay home. When it comes to their test result, if they get their test result, and say when we were at the worst-case scenario, they were getting their test results nine days after they were getting a test, they don't start quarantining an additional amount of time from the time they get their test. they get their test. Quarantine is all dependent upon when they had started showing symptoms and they count back two days before then. If they were asymptomatic, that changes the time that they were in. And if they have certain underlying health conditions, they may be asked to stay home even longer because of the way that their body's immune system responds and what that concern is. And so it is not 14 days or 10 days or a certain number of days after they get their test result. It has to do based on when they started showing symptoms and then they go back two days before then and then they start looking at what their time period is for them to stay at home. So it is varied. We don't want people to shy away from those tests. We understand that people are concerned that they, they don't want to stay home. I've, I've stayed home for 14 days and not been able to go to my mailbox. It's not fun. It's, it's not fun. And it's, it's an inconvenience, but it is one of those things that we do ask our public to be cognizant. They don't want to have it. We don't want somebody else to get it. And not everybody has simple symptoms. Some people get some, feels like a, like a chest cold. Other people get very severe symptoms. There's no rhyme or reason as to why one person gets some and another person gets another thing. We have those who are in their 80s with underlying health conditions who recover with no problems associated with COVID. And then we have others who are, seem relatively healthy and they pass away in their 40s. There are a variety of different things and the disease hits people very differently. Some of the challenge and some of the things that we're watching are, is the science that's coming out and Nature and Lancet have both put out a couple of articles that look at what some of the longer-term ramifications are of people who had COVID. They might have not had very serious symptoms associated with it, but they're reporting six months, seven months, eight months later, problems with blood clotting, problems with respiratory illnesses, problems with heart valves and so forth with some damage that didn't show up during the time that was there. And I don't want to be, I don't want this to be a presentation that creates doom and gloom for our community, but there is a level of seriousness that the, that the community needs to understand related to COVID. We have a large number of our population that are out there that are susceptible and it's not just because you're over the age of 65. There are, we have people who are all kinds of walks of life that have that susceptibility and we don't always know why one person is susceptible over another. But we do need to have a certain level of seriousness with it. But we also are not asking people or encouraging people to stop having a life, to have a fear associated with it. We want them to live life, but live life with an understanding that there is some risk out there and there are ways for them to mitigate it. But we do fall in line with what the governor's recommendations are and those are the recommendations across the state in an effort to try to get it so that we have the ability to be comfortable and not be so concerned when we head out to the grocery store that we have the risk of contracting COVID and what does that mean for us moving forward? There were a huge number of people who got tested before Thanksgiving because they wanted to know whether or not they had COVID before they went and were with family and friends. We have a huge number of people who are being tested right now. Yesterday, we were in Story County and we had 199 people from Story County that were tested because.
That must have been the whole county.
They want to know if they got it from when they were with family and friends at Thanksgiving. We know that prior to the Christmas holiday, we are going to have a large number of people who want to be tested again because they want to know if they have it before they go to the holiday with family and friends. We do know that more people are traveling because they're calling us to be tested so that they can travel because they have to have tests. So we know that people are doing different things. It is important to be cautious. It is important to take the mitigation efforts that you can to prevent the spread of the disease for the benefit of the whole county. That is what we want, make sure people are understanding. We will get back to a place where we can all be together and we can all be gathering the way that we used to. Douglas County is an extremely friendly county. I love living in this county. I love being a member of this county and we are a good community. We need to be good community members and share that responsibility with one another and take care of each other. And that's part of us doing it. We don't have to like it. We are just doing it for each other.
You know, along those lines, we've been castigated several meetings in a row about not going back to our normal meeting and having it open to the public and, and doing social distancing and, and that. What, what would be your advice on, on, on that? Should we continue Zoom meetings and at least in the near future to prevent, you know, contacting, having the, the disease contact folks that just come innocently to our meetings?
Yes.
What's the advice?
Continue Zoom?
The advice would be to continue your virtual meetings the way that you have been until we're able to see the county's disease risk reduced dramatically.
And when you say that, what, what would be an indicator of dramatic reduction? Not going to zero, but I mean some level?
No. It would, I would encourage this, I would encourage the county to follow what the recommendation is to get that positivity rate under 8%.
And do you see if this were to continue in, in the rates that we're going, you see that there'll be further restrictions close to the lockdown things that we had before?
I don't have any indication from the numerous meetings that I'm on as to what that future looks like or what it looks like past the pause. I have no idea.
Past the pause? What, what do you mean by past the pause?
Right now, we're on the three-week pause. The governor has put us on a three-state pause. And so I don't know what that, I don't know what that looks like beyond what, and what he's investigating and stuff. And I was on the mitigation task force meeting earlier today that is held with all the industry leaders and there was nothing that I heard on that call that gave an indication beyond. Unfortunately, I was unable to stay on. I needed to be here to be able to speak with all of you, but I don't know what the agenda item that was looking at what the current status is with the state. I was unable to hear that prior to this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Cates.
I, I just want to make a comment about the task force meeting. As you recall, we were required to provide a, a report to that task force meeting and I just wanted to let you know, we're supposed to be giving updates, but because we're in this pause period, they did not require any updates from any of the counties. That's FYI.
And, and your update would have been, we're going along or what would your update have been?
Other than updated numbers, I, I think I would have talked about the cancellation of the three holiday events. That's something I reported to them that we were looking at previously. I know that wasn't a popular decision, but that was something we did in conjunction with our public health officer, emergency management and sheriff's office.
Right. Okay, are there any other events that you're looking at right now?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay. If there are no further questions, I'd like to thank Ms. Freeman for taking time out to, I'm Dr. Freeman, excuse me, for coming and briefing us. It's always good to listen to the people that are really close to it and you are close to it. I hope it doesn't affect you. I hope you beat this, the symptoms anyway. And that none of the people in your family are shying away from you, I would hope.
No, they are. They, they're actually quite okay with being away from me as, I think sometimes.
Temporarily, temporarily. Okay, well, thank you very much for, for the discussion and thank the commissioners for their participation.
Thank you. And if you ever, if you want any kind of regular updates, then you just let us know of what we can do and I'm happy to come and speak to you whenever it is that you have questions or if any updates you would like during your meetings.
Well, we, we do have a monthly update with the county commissioner on it. You're welcome to join him on that. I'm sure he would offer the same if he were speaking. But you, you're always welcome to come in anytime on any and provide at least public comment. If you schedule it, then we can have it as an agenda item, which is what we ideally like to do.
Great, thank you, sir. I will, I will keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a good day. And we'll move on to item two for presentation only. Update from U.S. Department of Interior Bureau of Land Management, Carson City District Office of their activities in Douglas County. Mr. Colom and Ms. Dow.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thanks for having us today. My name's Ken Colom. I'm the acting district manager for the Carson City District of the BLM and also is Kim Dow.
All right.
Kim will be presenting today.
Oh, it's her turn, huh?
Yeah. Always.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for, for having us. It's nice to see you all. So I, I just wanted to give a, a quick update on the four projects that we committed to continuing updating you on. The first one is the Johnson Lake sediment basins. We are currently working with Douglas County to find the correct sighting, the, the specific locations where those retention basins will go. And then we're also coordinating with Douglas County on the needs for the geotechnical evaluation that will be important for, for understanding where to site these, these retention basins. And then similarly for the smelter creek channel sedimentation, BLM is also coordinating with Douglas County on, on that. And we're trying to get a clear understanding of the previous work that was conducted in the area dating back to the 1990s and before. And then the authorizations that allowed for that work so that we can better understand both the short-term and the long-term solutions to the sedimentation that's building up in the channel and then figuring out what the correct permitting process is to address both those short-term needs and the long-term needs. And that's, that's my only update for the sediment issues. For the painted rock mine, this is the Knox Excavating Project. Since we last spoke, the BLM has been invited to be a cooperating agency and we accepted that status. So BIA will continue to be the lead on this project. So the BIA has their NIPA contractor, that NIPA contractor was actually in place before the BLM became a cooperating agency. So now that NIPA contractor is going back, looking at the comments that they've received and then looking at how they need to incorporate BLM's needs into the NIPA document. So that's where we're at right now. We do not have a schedule quite yet from BIA where that will be the next step, the next thing that we anticipate. And then the fourth project is the East Fork Fire Station. We're working with the district's fire chief to figure out how to complete the environmental site assessment. As soon as we have that done, we can move forward with the patent for that fire station. So that is, my updates is, is very short this month. Are there any questions?
Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Walsh?
Kim, where, where is the East Fork Fire Station site?
The East Fork Fire Station, you know, I, I had a map a couple of meetings ago. I think it is at the corner of, do you remember, Ken?
That's 580 and Topsie.
Thank you.
On the east side there.
Okay, there's, there's a, there's a, a fire, a fire station on, on North Sun Ridge. So that's, it will be close to that.
This, this is actually an existing fire station that was, it's already built. It's just getting the patent over to the East Fork Fire, Fire District so that they, it's no longer a BLM-administered property.
Gotcha, thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Dow, I have two questions. On both the sediment basins, the sediment basin projects, have you completed the archaeological review to determine if there's any significant findings or any, any issue with the Native American lands?
Not yet, no. We, we are still working with Douglas County on finalizing the plan of development. So once we have those specific sites that where the sediment basins will go, then, then we will complete that cultural inventory. But our, the archaeologists who work for our office are engaged in the project, so they're very familiar with the area and they know what to expect out there. We just have to pin down those exact locations before we can finish that part.
Then the, the other issue, which is of great interest to my constituents, is the Painted Rock Mine. And last we spoke, you indicated that, or at least BLM indicated, I forgot which one of you said that, that, that they don't have permission yet for a travel on, to create a road from the mine to the already scraped road. Is that still the case?
Yes. So yeah, let me provide a little more clarification. So their, their application is to use the existing road and they were seeking a permit to make some minor improvements to that road that would allow them to, to haul gravel across that road, you know, at a more commercial level. And so that permit, they do not have a permit currently to do that. We did have a temporary use permit that allowed them to make some minor modifications to the road, but we've canceled that permit since, since then. I think that, that was already canceled at the last time we spoke, I think. If not at the last time we spoke, then very shortly after the last time we spoke, that permit was canceled. So right now, they, and they also don't have a permit to actually conduct any mining activities from the BIA at this point. So they, they are not operating or they don't have any permits to operate at all at the moment. So the NIPA process that we will go through will look at different access points for the mine and, and different alternatives for the mine itself.
When do you anticipate the NIPA project, NIPA review will be completed?
Yeah, I don't, I, I unfortunately don't have a schedule, but I, I think I will by the next time we talk. The BIA is the lead for this project, so they'll have to set the schedule. And that's what they're working on right now is, is trying to regroup now that the BLM is, is part of this project. They're regrouping and figuring out what that schedule will look like, but I can certainly give an update on that at the next meeting.
Okay. I'll, I'll have to watch it. I'll watch Commissioner Eagles wrestle with this alligator. So any other questions from board members? Ah, Mr. Cates?
I just wanted to make a comment for the record. I believe all the, the members are aware, but we also received a letter from BIA to be a cooperator on the EA for the Painted Rock Mine and responded in the affirmative and we're just waiting to hear back from them.
Okay. Okay, well, Mr. Colom, Ms. Dow, you have questions for us?
I, I guess I just want to make a quick comment and reiterate that, you know, in the forum of us presenting, we'll pick the topics that are kind of on our plate, are most interesting at the time. But if any given time, the commissioners want to dig deeper into any of these topics or we want our specialists to come and discuss some of the programs that might be a mystery. You know, we have the Wild Horse and Burrow Program, grazing, mining, all of those programs. If there's any more detail wanted or for specific topics, just let us know and we can prepare that and use this same slot for those type of presentations.
You know, I, I'm glad you volunteered that because I think the other issue that, that is foremost in a lot of people's minds is the Wild Horse and Burrow Program. And I think an overview of that the next time we meet would be very helpful for the, the folks.
We can do that.
And is there any progress on them removing the acting designations on you all?
So the acting stick, however, we've both been extended through the next three months.
Okay. All right. Well, if you need recommendations, give us a call. Because you're the first BLM reps that we've actually been able to talk with and, and listen to. And so it's great to have you here.
We appreciate that and we'll keep coming back.
Thank you. And from my standpoint, you're invited anytime and certainly the monthly business has really been helpful, I think.
Good.
And thank you. All right. And have a, a great holiday because we probably won't see you until next year, right?
Yep, you all too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
And stay safe out there. All right, moving on. This is Public Works, item number three for possible action. Discussion to approve Nevada Safe Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Application for an Amount Not to Exceed $16.5 million for purposes of funding improvements to cave rock water system or other water projects and authorize Public Works Director to sign the loan application and any other supporting documents. Mr. Roman, Mr. Ricker. Are you going to summarize the 700? Are you going to summarize the 700 pages that you provided us with?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron Roman, Engineering Manager with Public Works, and Philip Ricker, our Public Works Director, is also here this afternoon. So we'll walk through the Cave Rock Water System Improvement State Revolving Fund Loan Application. And I apologize for the lengthiness of that, and there'll be a quiz at the end of the presentation to see how much you
Meet that the the picture that you wanted to show for the Cave Rock is a picture of the valley.
Well, it ties back into the consolidation that the board did back in 2019, right? We're all one consolidated water system at this point in time, so I have to thank Melissa Blasor for the template for the slides this afternoon. And anyways, if you're ready, we'll we'll proceed.
We're ready.
Okay, so we'll briefly talk about the Cave Rock Water System Improvement Project. The preliminary engineering report that was done for Cave Rock and Skyland is kind of the basis for the project. And we'll address critical and most critical improvements that are needed in the system. We'll talk about how the contracts for the improvements will be structured. This will be a multi-year, multi-contract effort. I'll summarize the budget and talk about what the proposed funding looks like. And then we'll we'll close with the leading up to the recommendation to approve the State Revolving Fund Loan Application.
Are you going to share your screen?
I am. Thank you very much. I apologize for that.
It's no problem.
Okay, let me know when it pops up there for you.
It's up.
Okay, so yeah, this is the presentation outline that I just covered, and we'll just jump right into it. So the we have a couple of different components for the water system improvements. One of the critical items is related to the water treatment plant. When the plant was constructed in the mid mid 1990s, it included one water filtration skid, which is that photo there. So the project will basically be replacing that skid with a basically a new skid that has two or three treatment trains that will provide redundancy so that we will be able to take one or two of those treatment skids out of service for maintenance purposes and still be able to treat water. And then the other part of the water plant upgrades would be improvements to the lake intake system so that we can address low lake levels if those to occur are to occur again. So the one of the most critical items in the in the system was the condition of the water lines and the lack of adequate fire protection in in the system. The in 2021, we're proposing to replace a significant amount of water lines in the Cave Rock area. This past summer in 2020, Rick Robillard in our office did a great job with the first project. And we replaced about 3,000 feet this year on Cave Rock Drive and the lower part of Winding Way. The 2021 project will basically include replacement of the balance of the pipelines up in the Cave Rock area. Sierra Nevada Construction is our construction manager at risk, and they've indicated they would have multiple crews working up in the in the development this summertime, so it'll be kind of a busy busy landscape this coming summer. In 2022, we would move down to replacement of water lines in the Lake Ridge area and the Hidden Woods area along with a section of pipeline along the Highway 50 frontage opposite the Cave Rock Water Treatment Plant. I think in 2022, we'll also have the ability to kind of step back, assess where we are with the overall project scope and budget, and if there's the opportunity to incorporate any additional work, we can certainly have those discussions as we move into 2022. So the this is kind of the typical project development process that we're following. The board previously approved contracts with HDR Engineering for the project design. And then in July, the board approved the contract with Sierra Nevada Construction and Core for Construction Manager at Risk Preconstruction Services. So our team has been working through kind of this stepwise design and value engineering process to pull together the engineering plans and the cost estimates. At the time we prepared this board item and the presentation materials, we were at about the 30% design. We're currently moving into close to the 60% design. Core, our C Mar is providing cost information as we as we go through the design and ultimately, when we get to the 100% design, they'll be providing guaranteed maximum price contracts for the work. And you know, before we move into construction, and those contracts would come back to the board for consideration. So in terms of how the contracts are being structured for the project, we I mentioned the active contracts with HDR for engineering and Sierra Nevada Construction for the C Mar Services. We anticipate four different construction contracts to basically implement all the improvements. The first contract would be procurement contract for the water treatment plant equipment that will allow us to select the equipment and then finalize the engineering design around the equipment to ensure that it meets the space and other constraints that we have, along with all the system performance requirements. The second contract would be installation of equipment in the water treatment plant along with the upgrades to the lake intake system. And then the final two construction contracts would be for the water line replacements. We would have one in season 2021 and a second in season 2022. When we first started this process with our C Mar, we had initially laid out a three-year construction timeframe for the entire project. They came back and said, well, we could, you know, we can knock about a 1.5 million off the cost of the project if we consolidate the work and accelerate it to do construction seasons. So that's the approach that we've been taking up to this point. It's an aggressive schedule, but we're hopeful that we can can stay on on track. In addition to the construction contracts, we'll also have engineering, construction administration and testing services contracts for each of the construction contracts. So of course, the big question is, how much is all this going to cost? We've at the 30% design based on the cost provided by the C Mar, total costs are around $18 million. The first two lighting line items, the design with HDR and the C Mar Preconstruction Services, those contracts are in place and have been funded. The guaranteed maximum price contracts for the four construction contracts and the construction services contracts, those will be coming back to the board at later dates for for consideration and award. So based on a 30% estimate, we're about an $18 million contract. I do want to note that the $18 million does include a contingency that the C Mar is carrying at this time. So as we proceed through design, that contingency should be reduced, and we'll have a better better feel for where the where the pricing is going to be when we come back with the construction contracts.
If I can interject at this point, Ron, just go back to that one slide. This, I know the board has been presented at times with with different programs that were done under a C Mar contract. This is the first one being done for Public Works. And I just want to reiterate that the the process here and the construction management at risk, that that acronym basically means that Sierra Nevada Construction and Core Construction are working together with the engineering firm to firm up the design and during the during the firming up the design, as they move from 30% to 60%, up to 100%. They're actually working through the details of of the how that design translates to the actual construction process, what what they're doing and and what they can anticipate to see as they do the construction or do the installation. So unlike a traditional project where a bid package is put together and a contractor is given you know, 30 day timeframe or something to review that and come up with their best guess at a at a at a proposed price for the project. This is one where they actually work through all those details during the design phase, and hence the terminology that we're using or the terms that are used as the guaranteed maximum pricing. So when when we get to 100% design, they're actually coming back now with a with a fixed essentially a fixed price, and there really won't be contingencies anymore. The only only contingency is going beyond that point would be for things that are unforeseen. You know, the example would be they start excavating in a portion of the Cave Rock area and end up against a granite mountain or something and have to do blasting or things that weren't anticipated. But other than that, you end up with a guaranteed maximum price. The contingency that Ron is talking about is really, there is so at the 30% level, they have around, what was it, Ron, again, 2.7 or 1.7 million?
About 2.7.
About 2.7 million dollars is the is the amount of money that they are playing with that would, in theory, comes down, doesn't doesn't go up from these prices. So so I mean, if if the contingencies, if they firm this up and everything worked in our favor, you know, we could be looking at a contract that's closer to 15 million, not or not 15, but around 16 million, not 18 million. So just wanted to to comment on that.
Well, this is much better than what was presented in the background material. So I appreciate you looking at it and sharpening your pencil. Let me ask you this question, too. Is there any any lesson to be learned from the 3,000 feet that they put in? Do they expect to run into a granite mountain? Or is the experience too too small? I mean, they got 8,000 feet they're going to put in. They've already put in the 3,000. Did they any lesson learned that that will also reduce that that possibility?
Well, during the course of construction this this year, we did have we did have a bid item to deal with what we call inexcavatable rock, which I think is what you're referring to in the course in the course of trenching. If they can't be excavated with typical machinery, then there's the provision, you know, to pay an additional cost to accomplish the work. So we did run into some of that this this summer. That information has been shared with the C Mar. But it's really, it's really unknown, really, until we start the actual process. What we're going to run into up, you know, throughout the balance of the project. So I think we can expect some of that, but whether or not we can definitively quantify it through this this process is really difficult to say. But I think as we structure the as we structure the guaranteed maximum price, we'll probably have a provision in there to to accommodate some level of that work effort.
And the other part that you mentioned in this so far is that you're going to work on the intakes. Two years ago, I think it was, we approved a project to extend those intakes and and redo the pumps. Isn't that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And then about that time, the lake levels rebounded and those were kind of just put on hold. So we're we're coming back now and incorporating that work as part of this this project.
That money is already approved, though, to do that. Is it included as part of this?
I guess what I can say, I think, is that money has been pulled back into the fund and then reallocated to the to the project, so to speak. So it's been, I guess, it's been accounted for.
It was it was accounted for in the the basic 12 million that that's in the fund right now. Has yet to be spent. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. I I know I interrupted your presentation. Let me see if any of the other Commissioners have questions. I can't see everybody with the shared screen, so if you have a question, would you please speak up?
Commissioner Angles has a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Angles.
After the after this project, there's two more to do up at the lake. Is that correct?
I think it's fair to say we're always going to have some level of work at the lake. We've identified capital improvement needs in the Zephyr Water Utility District. This this project and the upgrades to the water treatment plant address. You know, that water treatment plant is shared with the residents in Skyland, so that's really benefiting both Cave Rock and the Skyland Systems. Cave Rock has been the most critical, I'd say, infrastructure infrastructure that needs replacement.
Okay, there are still there are still projects that are on the list, I think, that Mr. Angles is referring to in the important but not critical categories. I mean, you had four or five categories there. And I think he's referring to that list. You're you're just taking the most the low hanging fruit that's most important right now to get done. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. We're focusing on the most critical and critical items up in the Cave Rock area.
And then to answer his question a little further, you'll come back to the board when you have proposals for those additional items. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Did that clarify it a little bit, Mr. Angles?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Well, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Roman.
Okay, so I guess the the next, you know, the big question is, how are we going to going to pay for all these improvements? We have an $18 million estimated project cost at this point in time. The board might recall that we recently executed a grant agreement with the Forest Service that totaled about a half million dollars. And that's that money is allocated to the pipeline replacements up in Cave Rock in 2021. We're proposing to use capital reserves in the amount of about 1 million, and then the balance would come from the State Revolving Fund Loan Application, not to exceed the 16.5 million. Okay, and then I I guess, let's see. This is just a snapshot of the Douglas County Water Utility Fund 328, based on the fiscal year 2021 budget. Really, the only thing I want to note on this slide is we're showing total operating reserves of about 3.7 million dollars. To comply with the county policies for coverage and reserves, we we need about $800,000 in there. So we're going to see about 2.9 million of those operating reserves roll down into the capital reserves or system reemplacement. So today, you know, as part of your board packet, you have the State Revolving Fund Loan Application. So we're basically asking the board to approve the SRF Loan Application in an amount not to exceed 16.5 million dollars. When we came to the board with the rate update in June of 2019, that rate structure that was adopted anticipated debt financing of about 20.7 million dollars over over a 10 year period to fund the most critical and critical items in our water water system. So Finance has performed pro forma cash flow, and they've confirmed that we can satisfy the county policies for for coverage and reserves with with the 16.5 million dollar loan and additional debt service that goes along with that. One thing I I do want to mention, there might be some confusion because, you know, we've been talking about a loan application at this point, but and this is a tentative bond issue and schedule, but the loan with the with the state is in the form of a of a bond. The the bond is Douglas County will sell a bond to the state treasurer, and then we in turn enter into a loan contractor agreement with the state to secure those capital funds and then you know, pay back, pay that back through debt service schedule. So this is this is an abbreviated tentative bond issuing schedule. It's probably changed a little bit since we got pushed from the previous meeting, but the two items that I've highlighted and blue there are kind of a couple of milestones I just want to mention. The first is January 20 of 2021, Board for Financing Water Projects Meeting. Assuming that the that our board approves the SRF Loan Application today, we'll be in a position to go before the Board for Financing Water Projects in January for consideration of the loan. And then at that point, then we would follow go through the bond process, ultimately come back to the Board of Commissioners in April of 2021 with with a bond ordinance. And that's a key day because my understanding is when the board adopts that bond ordinance, then the money is technically available for use on the project. then the money is technically available for use on the project. So that puts us in a position to move forward with the pipeline replacements and the water treatment plant work in 2021.
And Ron, I think the other key date is Debt Management Commission approval, which is also the next item that we're gonna deal with. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe that date is now actually December 8th. And I know, I think we have Bond Council here for that and Terry from the Finance Department.
Right, and we'll discuss that in the next item. Chair? Mr. Angles, go ahead, sir.
Does the state have this kind of money to go lending to anybody? Thank you.
Yes, we can, we've talked to the state. We confirm that they have have the cash available, the money. So we're in a good position.
Thank you.
Not only that, but the interest rate will be lower.
That's correct. It's basically sold at a below market rate to the state. So we, the interest rates are very favorable and the terms of the, the loan are very favorable. We don't need to draw all of the entire amount. We basically draw what we need. So we have quite a bit of flexibility in how we manage the loan over the over the loan period. So I guess in clo-
I just said, that's great. Go ahead.
Okay, so I guess in closing, we're asking the board to approve application or approve the state revolving fund loan application in an amount not to exceed 16.5 million, along with authorization for the Public Works Director to sign the loan application and the necessary supporting documents.
All right. Questions, if you remove your shared part of the screen? Thank you. So are there questions from the board? Any other questions? Commissioner Rice?
Actually, it's not a question. I've been involved in this bonding with both the Sewer Authority as well as the Roundhill Improvement District. And the the state is very, very reasonable in their rates. And these are guaranteed amounts. The one thing that I did want to say is that many of my, I have several friends that are constituents that live in that area. And they have been very pleased with the the way that the project has been done so far and the the consideration that they've had for the residents up there. So that's just a kudo for the contractors that you guys have been using. Thank you.
Good feedback, good feedback. Any other questions for comments? Well, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rice.
I move that we approve a Nevada Safe Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Application in the amount not to exceed 16.5 million for the purposes of funding improvements to the Cave Rock Water System or other Roger, other water projects and authorize Public Works Director to sign the loan application and any supporting documents.
I'll second that. So that was Commissioner Angles that seconded it? Is that correct?
Walsh, that was Walsh.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Walsh. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Ricker, and thank you, Mr. Roman, for your presentation. Sorry that we had to postpone it for a couple of weeks, but thank you for being flexible. And entertaining, Mr. Ricker. We'll move on to finance. Number four, possible action, discussion to adopt Resolution 2020R-099 concerning the financing of improvements to the Cave Rock Water System or other water projects, directing the Douglas County Clerk Treasurer to notify Douglas County Debt Management Commission of the county's proposal to issue general obligation water bonds, additionally secured by pledged revenues in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 15 million 700,000 and provide the effective date. Ms. Willoughby and Mr. Ricker.
Terry Willoughby, for the record. This is an extension of the previous item. As Mr. Roman discussed, the state revolving loan is issued in the form of a bond because of that there are certain state requirements we have to meet, which involves convening the Debt Management Commission. So this is, this item is fulfilling those requirements and authorizing the Debt Management Commission to convene, which is scheduled for December 8th. That's correct.
Okay. Questions from the board? Seeing none? I just have one question. Who's on the Debt Management Commission? You know?
I can put it up. Hold on. No, offhand.
I think Dave Nelson's on.
Ms. Penzel, this is Leaper for the record, clerk supervisor. The members are Dave Nelson, Ross Chichester, Claudette Springmeyer, Beverly Anderson, and Cam McKay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leaper.
Thank you, Ms. Leaper. I'm not familiar with him. This is really under the Debt Management Commission's really under the Clerk Treasurer's office. So I don't typically deal with them. So, but thank you.
All right, so gentlemen, if there are no questions, we'll be looking for a motion. Commissioner Rice?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 2020R-099 concerning the financing of improvements to the Cave Rock Water System or other water projects as presented.
Second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Move on to the community development issue. Do you want to take a break at this point, gentlemen? All right, then we'll take a 10-minute break and then we'll move on to item number five. Thank you. We'll be back about-
I believe this is a first reading, or no, that's correct. It is a second reading. Okay. Sorry. So, Mr. Booth, are you the presenter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Keith Rubin is on the line and I think has a presentation as well.
You're gonna, you're gonna present one thing and he's gonna present another, or are you both gonna present the same thing?
I hope we try not to duplicate too much and you let us know who you'd like to go first.
I, you go first.
Okay, yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. This is Sam Booth, Planning Manager for the Record. Let me share my screen here if I can. Let me know if you can see that. That is just the title of the item that the Chairman just read.
Move on.
So, this, this item would note includes two, two motions and there are two items within this one agenda item. A master plan amendment as well as a zoning map amendment. The project is located at 2174 East Valley Road. You can see that highlighted in the image here in a kind of cyan light blue outline. This is in the northwest corner of the East Valley Community Plan. Johnson Lane Community Plans to the north, Central Ag Community Plan is to the west. The current existing master plan designation of the property is forest and range. And the existing zoning of the property is FR19, which is forest and range 19 acre minimum lots. The applicant is proposing a master plan designation, land use designation of rural residential. As well as a zoning designation of rural agriculture five acre minimum lot sizes. Some of these maps of the parcel may show the adjacent zonings a little bit better, so I'll move on to these. But on the left, left-hand side image here, this is the master plan, future land use of the site. As I said, forest and range, and the parcel is the one in the center right here, that kind of brown color. To the south and to the east is rural residential. Future land use designation, and that's the designation the applicant is requesting. To the north is receiving area. To the west is agricultural, and then kind of northeast, you can see there's another parcel there that's forest and range as well. As far as the zoning, excuse me, yes, yeah, the zoning labels at the top are wrong there. I apologize for that. The image on the right is your zoning, and they're requesting, excuse me, here we go. RA5 rural agriculture is the zoning that they're requesting. That matches the zoning to the south and the zoning to the east, as you can see in the image there. The zoning to the west is A19 agricultural 19 acre, zoning to the north is FR19. The site is located in a rural area outside of any service area. And as such, the applicant is proposing to utilize domestic wells and septic systems on site. If future land division and this zoning map and master plan map are approved. Again, no development or land division is proposed with this application. This is strictly the master plan amendment and the zoning map amendment. However, the applicant has indicated that future driveways would have access on East Valley Road. And that would be evaluated with the land division application for distances, for separation and those type of things. The applicant did provide as a courtesy trip generation analysis for that. Showing 54 average daily trips, potentially in seven peak hour trips. And that would be for the proposal of four roughly 10 acre lots. There's a little bit of discussion here, and Keith, as the applicant's representative, can explain this for you as well, but they're proposing 10 acre lots gross size, not the net size of the lots because small area of right-of-way would be dedicated with the land division application, it's anticipated, would be dedicated to the county. And that would reduce the overall size of the parent tract, which is exactly 40 acres today, to just under 40 acres. And because of that, each of the, you know, having less than 40 acres, they would not be able to get four 10 acre parcels out of, out of this property. So therefore, the applicants requested the RA5 zoning. But they have recorded, and that item was a deed restriction. Limiting the parcels to a maximum density of 10 acre gross parcel sizes. And that item was uploaded as supplemental to today's meeting agenda. And Keith can speak further about that. So, again, just kind of to recap, they're requesting rural residential master plan designation. I think they, they would have liked to request RA10 zoning. But because of the dedication for some right-of-way on East Valley Road, they'd be less than the acreage to be able to maintain four 10 acre lots. So they're requesting RA5 zoning today. But their deed restriction would hold them to 10 acre gross lot sizes. In your packet and pages 800 through 802, my staff report describes the findings for a master plan amendment. There are four findings, A through D, to be made, and findings for a zoning map amendment, four findings there as well, A through D. The Planning Commission did not believe the findings could be made in the affirmative for the requested amendments. And therefore, the Planning Commission recommended a denial to the Board of Commissioners today by a vote of five to two. Staff had originally recommended approval to the Planning Commission. And as a result of the hearing and the discussion that was had there, the Planning Commission's decision of denial regarded their belief in the inability to make finding B. Which states that the proposed amendment is based on a demonstrated need for additional land to be used for the proposed use, and that the demand cannot be reasonably accommodated within the current boundaries of the area. We had quite a bit of discussion at the Planning Commission about what that finding is intended to, to mean. And how that is to be interpreted. And, and I would just say that I, I think that's up to the, the county commissioners and the Planning Commission to interpret that, that definition for that finding as you see fit. That being said, the applicant provided some information about RA5 zoning. Developed lots versus undeveloped lots in the area. Staff did some research on this before we put together our staff report. From the research I did, since 2016, seven lots have been approved in the RA5 zoning district in East Valley. Through three parcel map applications. And countywide, just 31 lots have been created in RA5 zoning district since 2016. So this isn't something, this, this zoning district is not requested very often, or for large-scale developments at least. And so out of those seven lots in East Valley, five of the seven lots have recorded. There are two lots with a Hendrickson parcel map that received an extension for a 2021 recording deadline. And then out of those five recorded lots, three of the five have homes built on them or permits pulled. So that leaves a remaining two lots unbuilt. Our GIS department has helped us put together quite a few maps. As you well know, we're updating the county master plan. And they've been assisting us with, with quite a bit of data that we've been putting together for that. This image here is based on the assessor's data and the assessor's score of the property, whether it's vacant or developed. And you can see the, the property in questions outlined in red there. The green on this image is vacant parcels, and the dark gray are developed parcels. So you can see the lot just to the south has a home on it, it's developed. The lots to the east, there are four of them there, have homes on them, they're developed. And then you can kind of see that the piano keys, as you go with those, they're 10 acre lots along East Valley to the south. Whether they're developed or undeveloped. And there are a few vacant parcels through there without homes on them. To the south, that large green area that you see there, quite a bit of acreage. Is approved land within Grandview Estates Plan Development. And it was a plan development approved in 1999, and there were 64 lots approved with that. And as, as I can see from our records, 26 of those 64 lots have been recorded. And there's potential 38 lots remaining. Those are about two acres in size. They use the plan development and clustering to get a smaller than five acre dense lot sizes in that development. And you can see to the eastern side of the development, they've had to preserve in a conservation easement some areas. That would be the same case as well. But there have been multiple issues over the years since 1999 with the developer for that property. I think trying to move forward with finalizing the phasing there. So that's that large, large tract of undeveloped land that you can see. Additionally, and somewhat matches that last map. For the master plan process, we're also mapping septic systems in the area. And then location a number of those. And I think this map was, was interesting to see that it also shows which parcels are developed because they have a septic system located on them. And those are the orange parcels, where the green parcels have two septic systems. Likely in the case that they have an accessory dwelling on the property. So again, you can, just gives you an idea of the homes along East Valley Road to the south. Kind of every other one that has a home built on it or is vacant. To the east, there, there are developed parcels there. And then you can see just East Valley as a, as a whole, much further to the south there and how the density or developed nature of East Valley. And those white lots in between there are undeveloped parcels. And you can see that also to the north within Johnson Lane a bit there. So with that, the recommended motion from the Planning Commission is to move to deny Resolution 2020R-108, which is for the master plan, future land use map amendment. And the additionally with that, there, we have a separate motion for the zoning map amendment. And the motion to deny that is coming from the Planning Commission as well. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. As I said, Keith Rubin is on the line representing the applicant, and I believe the property owner themselves are on.
Hey, Mr. Rubin, what is your pleasure here?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to proceed first with my presentation. I'll make it brief. Not to be repetitive with what, too much of what Sam said, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the owner. Dr. Barbara Lichman would like to speak to the, address the board as well. Is that it? With your, with your concurrence, can I do that?
Well, as long as we're briefs.
Yes, sir. Now, let me share my screen. So, as he said, the request was for a master plan amendment from forest range to rural residential. And a zoning map amendment from FR19 to RA5. I could take some parcels to the south. The owner has recorded a deed restriction limiting parcel sizes to 10 gross acres. So you'll see about a dozen parcels south of this. Those parcels were created, and this also is the actual restriction that the owner has recorded. That limits it to 10 gross acres for anything that's created. These parcels to the south were all basically created in the early 90s. And they were conditioned to place deed restrictions on that limited them to 10 acres. So when you look up the parcel sizes in this area, you'll see that although they had this zoning of RA5, most of them are in the 10 acre or between the nine and 10 acres in size. And so we try to be, again, consistent. And using this project, which really, in our belief, is an infill in this area. We chose to do as they had, have done, ask for the same zoning and the same land use to, that our neighbors to the south and to the east enjoy. And this is the property with the, with the aerial turned on. Again, these are the properties that are nominally 10 acres, but actually are slightly less. And which is what occurs when you give up the right-of-way or East Valley Road. This shows the forest range land use, and you can see this is the rural residential block. And to the north is the receiving area. We're right at the edge of this community plan for East Valley. And for reasons that none of us can really understand, this site has this designation when everything else around it is a little different. This is the current zoning, as Sam pointed out, forest and range, 19 acres. And this is a proposed, again, RA5. And, I'm sorry, this is a proposed RA5. So there were four findings that you need to address to change a master plan. On finding A, when we went through the hearings, the applicant course believes we can make it in the affirmative. The staff report to the planning commission believed it could be made in the affirmative. And actually, the planning commission thought that could be made based on their, on their actions. Finding C, same thing about materially affecting availability of level of service. Everyone involved believed that those, this finding could be made in the affirmative. Planning Commission, applicant and staff. And finding B regarding compatibility and infrastructure was also believed by the planning commission, the applicant and the staff, that that finding could be made. It was, it was really finding B where, where we ran into trouble, I would say. The applicant maintains and still does that finding can be made. The staff and the staff report believed that that finding could be made based on the information that was provided. But the planning commission, I would say, stumbled. I think they, if you read the minutes, they really struggled with actually what even finding B means or how it's analyzed. As I explained to the planning commission, because I was asked in our approach how it was done. We use the same methodology that the staff has done on staff-initiated master plan amendments. And that we have used on master plan amendments since the last update was done, starting around 2015, 2016. We looked at proposed parcel sizes and similarly sized parcels for availability in the East Valley Community Plan area. Again, the same approach that the county staff has used in the past. And, and what we found is there's very few, even fewer than Sam initiated in his report today to you, of 10 acre lots. And there's really a dearth of those, which is really what we're proposing to create. When you, when you look at that lot size, there's, there's hardly any created in, in, with respect to the number of parcels in the, in the area. We also showed how the pattern of development, the owner's owned the property since 1995. Which is the, the image on the left. And on the right, this shows the difference in absorption of those 10 acre lots in her area since then. Then we did another map of the East Valley Community Plan that shows that there are seven, a total of seven vacant parcels that are with a land use of rural residential that are vacant. And that was the analysis we also gave to staff. With that, I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Dr. Lichman. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, short, brief, good.
Absolutely brief, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I favor brief. So I'll cut to the chase right at the outset. We've been talking about finding B, which, as you know, says that the proposed amendment We've been talking about finding B, which as you know, says that the proposed amendment must be based on a documented need for additional land to be used for the proposed use. Not only did the planning commission struggle with the meaning of need, which is amorphous in the extreme because it could be anybody's need, but since 2017, when the law was changed in Nevada Revised Statutes 278 got 0284, the zoning, any action of a local government relating to development, zoning subdivision must be consistent, not with that finding, but with the policies in the master plan. The zoning code has to be consistent with the master plan. And right now, I'm not sure that the findings will change since 2017 because this project as proposed is completely compliant and consistent with every master plan policy. And I will just briefly run through them, the applicable ones. EV Goal 1, that's East Valley Community Plan Goal 1. To preserve and enhance the character of the existing rural development in the East Valley community while establishing urban development that is compatible. That's exactly what this project does. As has been said 50 times by both Sam and Keith. While it is technically for five acres, we have already recorded a deed restriction to keep it to 10 because our goal was never to populate that property, but was to make it useful for our own purposes, living, and also for a few other people. So that policy is met hands down. Second, East Valley Community Plan Policy 1.3. Does this project form a buffer or transition area separating urban land uses from existing rural residential? The answer is yes. The adjacent property to the north is going to be developed. It's in the receiving area now, but it's going to be developed and there are various proposals for that. To the east, everything is consistent. The east and the south, in fact, the size of the lots there are smaller than the ones we anticipate. So we can, we fit directly in and we form a buffer with the denser development to the north and potentially to the west for commercial on airport property. Next, master plan, Douglas County Master Plan Policy 2.3. Douglas County shall give priority to development of vacant or underutilized land within communities per n infill or redevelopment, close per n. In other words, where a project fits in with established development, it shall be given priority. That's exactly the case here. And the zoning code that was cited by the planning commission also says that the proposed amendment should be compatible with the actual master plan use of adjacent properties. Again, infill, that's exactly what this is, consistent with the surrounding uses. Last point, was an interesting observation by one of the planning commissioners who opined that the property did not currently appear to be maintained and that it was just scrub. Well, that's not entirely correct because we have spent substantial amounts of money in fencing, flood control, all of that. However, even if that were true, the grant approval of four 10 acre lots of which, which is entirely consistent with the policies and the relevant master plan and leave 40 acres, or this board can leave 40 acres, which the commissioner refers to as scrub, but really is forest and range, the current zoning. So we have a choice. We can make it consistent as the master plan requires or leave it as forest and range or scrub as the planning commission denotes. And I thank you for your time. You've had other important things to think about.
Thank you, Doctor. So that brings us around to discussion between the commissioners. Questions for any of the presenters from commissioners? Commissioner Ingles, go ahead.
Any, there's, I haven't seen any discussion about water rights. Would you care to elaborate on any of this?
Keith?
I can, I can answer that. So after, if, if the project were, the zoning and land use changes were to be approved and they proceeded with the parcel map, they would have to acquire and relinquish 2.02 acre feet for every parcel created. So this, in this case, I believe it would be for all, it would be for four parcels. So they would have to purchase those and then give them up essentially so they would no longer be in the pool to the state is where they're relinquished.
It's my, it's my understanding that the Johnson Lane area had a lot more residences on wells, but the water went sour out in that area. So there's a big risk for anybody acquiring these parcels in regard to water and the quality of it.
I'll, I'll tell you this, Mr. Ingles, we did an analysis of the, for one thing, of the septic density in the area. And I, we submitted that with our application. The state of Nevada allows up to 117 septic systems in a one, basically one mile radius. And there were less than probably, if I recall, 20 in this one mile radius. And the reason, primary reason is because of the Bentley lands almost exclusively to the, to the west because they're agriculture, they're undeveloped, there's no plans I'm aware of to develop those, though that's probably going to remain. Also, I would note that to the north of the site, which is, you know, no adjacent, in fact, we showed it directly adjacent to its receiving area, is about at least 1,000 acres of receiving area adjacent and to the north of the site. All that receiving area must be served by community water and sewer to be developed. So I don't think we're going to see the concentrations of wells and septic systems that we've seen in Johnson Lane due to the, the absolute location of this property relative to other parcels and the density of wells and septic and the receiving area. And also finally, I believe this area hydraulically, hydrologically is in the Johnson Lane, or excuse me, is in the Carson Valley Basin. There are confined aquifers, for example, in Fish Springs where you cannot acquire water rights in the Carson Valley and relinquish them. If you're in these confined aquifers, I do not believe that this site is in a confined aquifer so we can readily access water rights suitable to the state.
Further questions?
Yeah, well, I'll just continue this. All along the pine nuts in there, from that area all the way down through Fish Springs to Ruins Top, the wells keep going deeper, which indicates that the aquifers are overappropriated at this juncture. And one of the considerations that has needed to be taken into account with planning and with this board is we've had back to back dry seasons now. And it looks like it's going to continue in the foreseeable future. And I think it would be delinquent on our part to continue expanding development, knowing full well that we are not going to have the water to be able to accommodate everybody. And we don't want to run into a situation like Las Vegas. The other thing is, we're setting a precedence here. We've got FR 19 changing it to SFR. This means that any of these guys that are zoned as A19, they should be able to change to SFR. So there's an amalgamation of things going on here and dynamics that bring this project into question and this zoning change. Hence, I am opposed to it. Thank you.
Obviously, I, I'm the counterpoint, counterpoint to what Commissioner Ingles is talking about. Not only do I live in the Johnson Lane area, but the, the real way to counter any of this is to have county water, municipal water is really what it's called, pipe to it. The, the Bentley land that's due north was approved for residential, I think it's RA 2 or RA 5. And one of the requirements was that they hook up with county water. And that, I don't know where they stand with doing that because I'm not part of the development. But I would tell you that you could condition this, but in our discussion for this zoning change, water isn't the consideration. Water is a consideration in general, I would agree. But we do not have a situation where the water is sour. And in the pine nuts, you're really talking about the BLM land where there is no development planned, although I think you should be planning on it. The, the condition within Johnson Lane itself, and that, that is from Johnson Lane north, past Stephanie Way, up to the mountain. In the north, north portion of that, there is an increase in the nitrates, which has been under observation and part of the MS 5 or MS 4 consideration that the state has to do. And it's been evaluated by the EPA. The information that in the evaluation is that if it continues to grow, then all of the people in Johnson Lane will have to be on county water and county sewer. Those are the, that's according to the USGS that that can be resolved. In fact, if you really want to look at it, the only way to counter Commissioner Ingles' concern about water is to put everybody, no matter how big the lot, on county water or municipal water. And that will be really tough in your district, Mr. Ingles, because you have a lot of people that are on wells. And that's going to be very expensive to drag those lines down everybody's street. So right now, the compromise is we're going to put the, the lots that are acre or smaller on county water. There is a requirement that they would have to hook up at some point in time. I'm not going to get into that issue because that's really not germane to the issue of zoning. And it's really not germane to the issue of the master plan. Does it conform to the master plan or not? If so, then we've got to consider the zoning. If not, then the zoning issue becomes mute. Or moot, I guess is the way I should say. Is that correct, Mr. Taylor? But anyway, the, the point being that our consideration is, does it conform to the master plan or not? So I, I would think that we go to the water issue. We are actually not, not supposed to be talking about according to the master OML. Dave?
Yeah, I, I have to go along with the planning commission on this. I do find that the need for additional lots anywhere in the county is really not necessary at this point. If every single lot was built out that we have currently in the county, we'd have a population of probably 120,000 people, which I don't think we need to increase the number of lots we have right now because we have plenty of lots.
Well, I don't think you could build out the lots because you can only build that according to the limitation in the Sustainable Growth Act. So to say that, that's like saying you have 8,000 lots to build on, true, or maybe true.
But they may be built out, yes. And they can be built out as long as, as long as they're available. We don't have to approve more because we have plenty. So the need is not there.
Okay, now, we talk about arbitrary and capricious, which is what we get criticized for in our decisions. How arbitrary and capricious is it to say there isn't any reason to build it out because we have lots? You have no data to back that up. You have no data on demand. We don't, and obviously, if we constrict the ability to build, we run the, the demand curve up and that means that the supply is immaterial at this point. And the, obviously, the intersection of supply and demand is where we've got to go. We've got, we don't even know what our demand curve is.
There is no demand for five acre lots at this point. We've got enough five acre lots out there.
And enough?
There's no further need, Barry. Statistically, they're not selling. They're not building on five acre lots.
Okay, they're talking about 10 acres anyway. Anybody else want to chime in on this?
Well, the demand, the demand is insatiable right now with Californians wanting to move out of California.
Well, you've just said it's
Hold on here, hold on. Now, here are some other things we have to think of. I mean, it may not be in exact compliance with this, but we have to look at, we have to look at the, the overwhelming congestion on our highways. And one of the worst areas that was analyzed by NDOT just recently was right there at 395 and Topsy, as one of the busiest intersections in the entire state and getting worse. So you've got, our infrastructure is becoming overwhelmed with the inundation of people moving into this area. And it's a no brainer. You build a house, they're going to buy it. So, you know, just because it doesn't conform with this or that, we have to look at a bigger picture and
You got to quantify this or that.
Well, we did quantify it. We put out a list of 8,000 projects that are rooftops just coming up. We haven't done any kind of planning other than rooftops, none. It's a failure on our part. And planning says no. And I agree with them. I understand what they're saying, but we have to look at infrastructure. And the other thing is, is there's supposed to be a water component with the master plan. We don't have one.
Commissioner Ross? Go ahead.
Oh yeah, thank you. A couple of comments. First of all, over the last five years, we've built an average of 173 rooftops per year. I wouldn't say that's out of control growth. However, just, just as some background information, I, I have lived in the, in the East Valley for, off and on for 15 years. When I moved here in 1991, there were very few homes that were developed out there on the East Valley and Buckeye. I think one of the homesteads was owned by Joe Nebe, maybe Ruth, Keith Rubin might remember him. But there were very, very few homes in that area. And over the years, over the 30 years that I've been here, the East Valley has developed in a rural manner. I mean, it has, I took a drive out Eldon Way, which T-bones into this property that we're talking about. And I went out about a mile and a half, almost two miles. A lot of 10 acre parcels out there. It's beautiful. It's a, it's a great area. People like rural living. So, you know, the, the question is, the land use designation, the master plan land use designation is forest and range. In my recollection of what forest, the meaning of forest and range, yeah, the meaning of it, or the purpose of it was to, to really act as a kind of a buffer between the public lands that people recreate on and, and the developed lands. And this is a, this is a piece of land, a 40 acre parcel, right in the middle of the valley that's forest and ranged and surrounded by all of the different kinds of uses. I think it was probably just missed in the master plan back in 1996. I don't know why it wasn't changed back then. But it's, it, to me, to me, it makes pretty good sense. Like I said, I went out Eldon Lane, most of those parcels out there, right, the ones right across the street from this parcel are five acres. The ones further east on Eldon Lane are all 10 acres. This land looks right over a beautiful 6,000 acre Bentley ranch that'll never be developed. And, and I think it would make perfect sense, at least in my opinion, to, to change the, the land use zoning conformity with what's grounded. And I think if I did the math right, whether it was Keith or Sam, I'm not sure, there are only four lots that are 10 acres that are available. That's in the East Valley Community Plan. We talk, we hear a lot of comments from the, from the public about the master plan and how important the community plans are. So we shouldn't take that there's, there's lots available all over the county. We should say, no, there's only four lots available in the community plan. That's the East Valley Community Plan. So I think I can make that finding. That's the East Valley Community Plan. So I think I can make that finding. I mean, this should actually be right in the wheelhouse to some of those who want to see, um, uh, land developed in rural manner, and this is certainly going to be, uh, a rural manner. I, I, I can make the findings that for this reason I support this.
Anyone else? Commissioner Rice?
Yes, sir. Normally, um, I, I pretty much agree with what the planning commission does and their decisions, but I think they blew it on this one. And I think that Dr. Leesman had a very compelling argument that, uh, this in fact was, um, a misjudgment on their part. And I'm, uh, I'm leaning towards favoring this. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, um, I have a question for you, more of a legal question, and that is, if this is deed restricted, uh, to ten acre or nine acre parcel, uh, size, how does one or can one get a deed restriction lifted?
Oh, wow. You know, I, I'm not really too sure. I mean, it, here in Nevada, I mean, it's like, once you put a deed restriction on, the intent is that it remains.
So this is.
You would have to go to court.
This is, this would be more effective than us making it RA five. If they put that deed restriction on there, what you're saying is it's almost impossible to get it lifted. But we could, you know, any subsequent board could change the RA five to RA two.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, this is Sam Taylor for the record. It, it's all a question of, you know, the language of the deed restriction. And it appears that the deed restriction that they have actually in fact recorded, um, would lock up the property in perpetuity extensively, so.
That's right.
Okay, so, so we're actually making sure this is going to stay rural by confining it to four ten acre or nine acre, um, lots. Seems to me like that's more than meeting the goal of the, the master plan to keep it rural. Because it's guaranteed to be kept rural. And if Mr. Engle's argument is correct, um, it'd be tough to get water to it. So it would seem to me that you're taking a piece of property that's in the middle of RA zoning and you're allowing it to be RA, but you're getting it out from underneath the, the zoning that isn't even applicable, which is forest and range. The surrounding property is not forest and range. It is agriculture and RA. And so it's compatible with the zoning. That's what we're doing is making it compatible. I, I think the other part of this is, I have for a long time, and I had hoped that the master plan, um, revision would quantify, would quantify some of these things. And need has to be quantified. It can't be in the eye of the beholder. If it is in the eye of the beholder, then it goes to, my eye would go to the owner of the land. Because if you don't want it developed, then if, you got to put your money where your mouth is on those things. If you, if you own the land, you should be able to develop it the way that the zoning allows you to do it. And, and determine the, the demand that way. If the owner determines that the demand is for ten acre properties, well, then that's, that's good enough. We, we can't sit back and say, okay, I live in South County and I'm saying there's no demand for it. Who are, who are what is, is basing that on any kind of data point? And I, I, I would object to, I think that, that we, we, we have another situation, but I'm not going to describe it in, in total. I'm just going to say that when there's a fence line and two, two, uh, owners of property can't agree, they come to the county to, to make us make them agree. But when there's no fence line, when there's no other indicator of, of property lines, why should we try to restrict what the owner wants to do? And if it's compatible, whether it be sagebrush or, or pine trees, that's, that's all that they have to say, is compatible to the area. And I think it's incumbent upon us to have some kind of, of standing with the people that own it. The master plan is not designed to, to keep development away, nor is it designed to improve development. It's designed to say, this is what we think it ought to be like. If you drive around this county, you'd be hard pressed to say that we are not a rural county. And if you're looking at really protecting the rural environment, changing this to ten acre parcels forever makes it rural, in my view. So are there any other comments? Mr. Engels? Counter?
Uh, I, I, I can see where this is going.
Well, you're free to say something. Do you want to say anything?
Well, the thing is, you, you simply state that, oh, we can, we can hook these place, places up to the county, sewage, water and everything. And if the water rights aren't restricted or deed restricted to the parcels, they can be sold off piecemeal to anybody. And then where we're at, we're just giving this all away. And this water consideration is huge. Because the reason that Johnson Lane went on the county water was because why, Commissioner Penzel?
Because of the, um, they, they had a, a well in Saratoga Springs that had, uh, it, it fell below the, the national norm for, uh, uh, was it?
Arsenic.
Uh, arsenic or arsenic. It, and that's because they lowered the national norm from, um.
I, I don't care what the national norm bid. That's what happened. And.
Well, it was arbitrary, it's the way they did it.
Well, I, I can't, I can't control the FDA or whoever it is.
EPA.
In regard to that, but, so the aquifer out in that area was overappropriated to the point that it wasn't.
No, it's not overappropriated.
No, no, wait a minute. The arsenic content got too high. It wasn't.
That's not over appropriation. Over appropriation is when you are drawing more from the, the aquifer than you're coming in and recharging it with.
That's correct. If it's being properly replenished, you wouldn't get, uh, a higher arsenic content.
No, arsenic is, no, arsenic has an affinity for iron, but it has, uh, it is naturally occurring.
I understand all that. I understand all of that. But that aquifer out in that area, which would be supplying these homes, is being impacted by the same reasoning.
It's one aquifer. In fact, the deepest point of the aquifer is right where we're, we're talking about. It's right at the airport. You know?
This property out there is closer to Johnson Lane.
Yeah, true enough. No, no, it's not closer. The Bentley property is on the border of the airport.
I'm not talking about that. Well, you mentioned, you, you said earlier that if the aquifers don't work, we just go ahead and hook it up to the county system.
No, if it's over the EPA requirements, we'd have to do.
Okay, that's, that's the same thing. You know, for one reason or the other, they're going to be forced to go on to the county water system. And that puts more demand on the county water system.
It's what it should. That's the way it should all be. It should all be all municipal. What, which, which type of, of, uh, zoning do you have the greatest evaporation with? Agriculture or residential?
I'm not talking about that.
Well, yeah, because that's.
I, I understand all that. We're not talking about ag property. We're talking about changing property to being residential.
Forest and range.
They're also going to be on their own individual wells and their own individual septic.
Well, and I, I'm all for putting everybody on, on, uh, county water and sewer. There are only four thousand, uh, EDUs right now. I, I think that there ought to be one water system, one sewer system, and we would cut down on the cost and the price. But i- if, if you said that in the area where you live, John, I, I, I'll bet you people would be really unhappy because they don't want to hook up to county water and county sewer.
Saying to hook up to it. You were the one who said, if these wells don't work out there, they'll hook up to the county system.
No.
I'm saying, nobody's discussed water, water rights. I mean, these people can take their individual water rights and sell them off to Joe Schmidlab.
They don't have any water rights on this property. They're going to have to buy water rights. Is that correct, Mr. Rubin? Is that right?
That's, that's correct. There's no surface water rights.
Okay, that's all I wanted you to answer. Okay, so they don't have any water rights on it. So they've got.
They're going to go to wells. They're going to be on a well on a septic.
They got to get that approved by the state engineer. They have to get that approved by the state engineer. No? Dave, go ahead.
Uh, it's my understanding that if you have a lot, you can put a well on it without having water rights.
That's because you get it approved by the state engineer.
Yes, that's true, but you don't have to have the water rights to do it.
If the state engineer who controls water in the state of Nevada says you can do it, you can put a domestic well in.
Do you think he's going to deny anybody the right to put in a well on their lot?
Yes, he does. And he has. And you can request a, a list of those and, and then people in Perron can tell you who that is.
Well, what? I don't think there's been very many in Douglas County that have been denied.
Why is that, Dave? Why would that be?
Because they believe there is enough water for everybody.
Have the water.
But when you get too many wells and too many septic tanks in the area, then you're going to have a problem.
That's absolutely correct. So how do you prevent that?
By not doing more lot splits.
You have, no, you have municipal. And, and the, you're going to continue to run into this problem. Anyway, Wes, go ahead.
I think this conversation is getting us nowhere.
Yeah, because we're not talking about water. We're talking about zoning. Larry?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion if that's appropriate.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none? Go ahead.
I would move to approve resolution twenty twenty R dash one oh eight, a master plan future land use map amendment to change forty acres from forest and range to rural residential. Future land use based on the ability to make the required findings recommend the non-recommendation of the planning commission, the staff report and the evidence presented. I just will, will take off that last part. The approval, in other words, just to make the required findings and the evidence presented. And I would also move to approve ordinance twenty twenty fifteen seventy-five, a zoning map amendment to change forty acres from F R nineteen to RA five based on the ability to make the required findings and the evidence presented.
No second.
Okay, any further discussion? Not hearing or seeing any. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion?
I think Doug Ritchie had something.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office for the record. Just to be clear, because the proposed motion, um, is inconsistent with a recommendation of the planning commission, I would request that, um, Vice Chairman Walsh or one of the members of the commission indicate the specific findings and basis for the findings for the zoning map amendment. Uh, that the finding can be made specifically A, which is tied to the proposed amendment to the master plan, which the planning commission found that finding B, it's inconsistent. The additional land is, um, that there are plenty of lots, um, that this finding can be made and the basis for that. So in other words.
It, let's, let's be a little more simple. Can, do you want us to have two separate votes?
It would be, it'd be clear if you had two separate votes and you're specific about the findings.
And normally, uh, the, the people voting for, so they can make the findings, those voting against have to say which finding they cannot make.
Well, Doug Ritchie, for the record, to be clear, typically if the board is voting in favor of, of the planning commission's recommendation and the staff report, they can rely on the findings in the report. However, in this case, the board appears to have a motion pending that, um, says that some of the findings can be made where the planning commission found they could not be made. Therefore, for a good record, I would respectfully request that, um, either the Vice Chairman Walsh or one of the commissioners explain why they feel specifically finding B can be made. And then.
How about I call, have a roll call vote and each, each commissioner talk about the findings, whether they can or cannot be made, and if they can or cannot be made, that they address it. And specifically for those voting for it, how they could find for, uh, finding B.
Doug Ritchie for the record, that would be, that would be great. That'd be a very clear record here, uh, Chairman.
And can we do the roll call vote for, uh, both, um, um, both motions at the same time?
Yes, you could, Chairman.
Okay, so to be straight about it, when you vote on this, well, I'll call for you to vote individually. And you can say what finding you believe can be made, uh, in the affirmative or negative, uh, for both of the, um, uh, votes. You're free to address all fi- uh, four findings on, on both of them, okay? So we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh. It was seconded by Commissioner Rice, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and so I will call for a roll call vote and, uh, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Engels.
I'm opposed to this and I am in concurrence with the planning commission.
Do you want to go through any of the findings?
They've already done it, and I concur with the findings of the planning commission.
Okay. And then, uh, we'll go to, uh, I guess, uh, myself. Um, and I, I believe that finding B in the, uh, for the master plan amendment can be made in the affirmative because there is no, right now, the number of lots available at, as, uh, ten acre lots is exceeding, it's less than seven. There's no, uh, reason that there's not a demand for those lots. And we haven't since nineteen ninety-six, it really had the ability to make it ten acre lots. So I believe that it can be found in the, in the affirmative. I believe that, uh, uh, need would be there and is there. Uh, and because of that, then I believe that the, um, zoning map amendment can be made, all four findings can be made in affirmative. Um, Commissioner Nelson?
Uh, I disagree. I don't think the findings can met, finding B, as the planning commission found, cannot be met.
Uh, Commissioner Rice?
I'm voting in favor of this measure. I believe that the use of this property is consistent with the surrounding properties and that, um, there is a need for lots of this size, and I believe that it meets all of the requirements.
Very good. I should add that I believe it's conforming to the, uh, uh, surrounding lots also. Commissioner Walsh?
Yes, thank you. I voted in the affirmative, um, because I believe the findings, all four findings for a master plan amendment can be met. Uh, uh, planning, uh, finding A, uh, that's consistent with the policies in the master plan. Uh, finding B, uh, that there's a need, a demonstrated need for additional land, and this is based on my personal observation of lots out there. Uh, that the, uh, proposed amendment would not materially affect the availability, adequacy or level of service and that, uh, the proposed amendment is compatible with the actual master plan use of all the adjacent properties. And therefore I would, I would vote the affirmative and also all four findings for the zoning can be met as well.
All right, then we have, uh, a vote of three. All right, then we have a vote of three to two with the reasons behind them. Is that sufficient, Mr. Ritchie? Or do you want more elaboration?
Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Thank you, Chairman Noah. That provides a good record for the basis for the board's vote.
Okay. And congratulations, Doctor. You've got your zoning.
I wish I were there in person to thank you all for your consideration and your thoughtful findings.
Appreciate it. We'll move on to item six for possible action. Discussion on ordinance 2020-1576, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment and plan development overlay to change 51.67 acres of 64.23 acre parcel from multifamily residential rural agriculture five acre minimum and public facility zoning to single-family residential 8,000 zoning with a planned development overlay and to approve a tentative subdivision map for 190 single-family residential parcels, generally ranging from 8,000 to 12,000 square feet in area and including three public facility parcels and to repeal ordinance 2006-1158, referred to as Ashland Park Project. The subject site is located in Gardiner Ville Community Plan at 1424 Toller Lane, on the north side of Toller Lane between Harvest Avenue and Decker Road. Second reading, Mr. Rubin. And Mr. Booth. And Mr. Booth, you go first, and Mr. Rubin, you go second.
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. This is Sam Booth, planning manager, for the record. As the chairman just read, this item is for the Ashland Park proposed subdivision and plan development. The project is located at 1424 Toller Lane. And you can see that highlighted, outlined on the map on the right side of the image here. It's adjacent to Toller Lane at the back of the Chichester subdivision. You can see Stotick Park is the area here along Toller Lane. It's kind of the cutout of the subdivision. And the Decker Ditch and Decker Road are to the east of the site. The, let me see. I can talk to you about the existing zoning of the property a little bit better with the maps that we have here. First thing I would note is that through this process, as we do with any land application, we sent notices to adjoining property owners because this is quite a large site and because it's adjacent to the town of Gardiner Ville, Chichester subdivision, Stotick Estates. Quite a few notices were mailed out, 533 to be exact. And you can see the notice radius map here. On the left, you can see the master plan designation of the site. And on the right, you can see in this image the zoning of the site. A couple of things I'd call your attention to here. And I may start with the zoning of the property if I can. Currently, it is multifamily residential, MFR. And that's that orange area, orange square in the middle of the site there. It's also public facility zoning. That's the blue on the map here. And then on the very east side of the property is RA 5, rural agriculture five acre zoning. It is this piece right here. Again, at the south end is Stotick Park along Toller Lane there. To the west, this SFR 8,000 is Chichester subdivision. A couple of unique things I'd call out with the zoning. The blue public facility zoning here was primarily the old alignment of Mueller Parkway. And you can see the parcel line follows that. The MFR zoning for the site and the development was west of the original alignment from Mueller Parkway. With the amendment to the alignment of Mueller Parkway in 2019, we, and there was an additional receiving area as part of the development agreement for Park Ranch Holdings. It was established on the site. And the result of that is the map on the left, which is the master plan, which was amended through a master plan amendment as well. You can see the new alignment from Mueller Parkway as the white area here because it's void of future land use. And it runs along the east side of the property, north to south. And so there's a small area west of the new alignment of Mueller Parkway that was established as new receiving area. The property, that existing MFR-zoned area, was previously designated future land use receiving area. And so that didn't change. What was added there was that area, as Mueller Parkway's alignment was moved to the east, new receiving area was established between the two in those areas there. Just wanted to call your attention to that. The background of this site, there's quite a bit of a history here. In 2005, a development agreement was approved between the county and H and S Construction, primarily centered around the construction of Mueller Parkway on the east side of the property. And then after that development agreement in 2006, the county approved a zoning map amendment and a plan development for H and S Construction. And that's what established that multifamily residential zoning on the property as well as the public facility zoning. And I didn't list it here. I should have the RA 5 zoning as well on the east side of the property. That development proposal was for 292 condo units. But in 2013, H and S Construction's obligations were not met, and their approvals expired. And the county therefore repealed the development agreement with H and S Construction. In 2019, as I just mentioned, there was a development agreement approved with Park Ranch Holdings, which amended the Mueller Parkway right-of-way line. Additionally, there was a master plan amendment approved in December that added that additional receiving area there, as I just mentioned. In 2020, Park Ranch sold the property to Ashland Park LLC. And the owner is Matt Carter currently. And as the chairman read in the title of the ordinance, if this ordinance, 2020 1576, is approved, it would repeal the existing ordinance that's still in place for the MFR zoning and the PF zoning that's there. So the project as submitted has an average density of 3.72 units per acre. They're proposing SFR 8,000 zoning that would allow up to 5.4 units per acre. Lots within the development are maintaining their minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet and will meet the plan development requirements and single-family development standards within Douglas County Code. The site, as I mentioned, once again, is located within a receiving area. The base density of the site would be four units per acre. And this is used for the calculation of transfer development rights that'll be required to be dedicated with the approval of any development. So the base density of the site would be four units. And for that, we have to look back at the zoning prior to the original Ashland Park approval. And the zoning at that time was A 19 and RA 5. And that's where the four units came into play from. So that original approval was conditioned to dedicate TDRs when the final map would record for the development. As we know, as I mentioned, the development never proceeded forward. There was no map recorded, so no TDRs were dedicated. So again, that's why we're looking back at that A 19 zoning. So the proposed project now includes 190 units total, which would be an increase in density of 186 units. And we have the project condition, with condition B4 in the staff report, to require 186 TDRs to be dedicated to the site with the recording of a final map. As far as open space on the site, Douglas County Code requires 25% open space for plan developments. However, within that section, A 1A, it waives the requirement for open space if over 50% of the density of the project utilizes transfer development rights. And the project will meet this requirement and therefore does not require the 25% open space. Essentially, they're going to be, as I said, dedicating 186 transfer development rights. As the TDR program works and the commissioners know, that'll be preserving land elsewhere in the sending areas of the county. And so I think that's why the code anticipates then waiving the open space requirement on site. The applicant intends to make the project accessible to Stotick Park. I showed you that in the image there, that it is kind of cut out around the project site is Stotick Park. It's a county park. It's adjacent to the site. They're going to provide two pedestrian walkway or trail connections to the park or to the sidewalks adjacent to it. And I can call out some of those areas on this map here. So this map is turned, so I could get it on the slide for you. North is to the left side of the map here. So apologies for that, but Chichester subdivision is on the bottom of your screen right here. You can see Cardiff Drive. And then the proposed alignment for Mueller Parkway is at the top of the screen here. So with the development plan that the applicant has submitted, they're going to do a few things. Number one would be, on the left side, you can see a detention pond that would be dedicated to the town of Gardiner Ville. And there was some discussion, I believe, at the town as well as the planning commission, about the ability potentially for this to be fenced and landscaped and utilized maybe as some open space in that area there. The applicant's also going to be creating a small parcel here along Westbury Drive that would allow access from Westbury Drive into Stotick Park. And they're going to improve a small trail there. And if you know that site, at the back of Stotick Park, there's some batting cages there. And there's a trail that goes from the parking lot out past the playground to the batting cages. And it kind of ends right there. This would connect that trail through to Westbury Drive and then back into Chichester subdivision. If you're familiar with the area, as I am, there's a fence at the back of Stotick Park. And there's actually, the fence has been pulled back because people in Chichester go out into the field to try to get into the park to get through the fence right now. You can see people are climbing over the fence or going through there. So I definitely think that this would be an improvement as far as creating that trail access, that pedestrian movement through into Stotick Park. Additionally, the applicant's going to be creating a small trail easement between two parcels near the intersection of Toller Lane and Mueller Parkway. Basically, you can see, I believe this is Hanover Lane, and apologies for the small font there, is a very long cul-de-sac. And at the end of that cul-de-sac, we were concerned about, you know, the pedestrian movement, again, being able to access the park or access the sidewalk along Mueller Parkway. The applicant agreed, and they agreed to install and access there so that pedestrians at the end of that cul-de-sac or anybody that lives in those homes along there can walk out to reach the sidewalk along Mueller Parkway and Toller Lane. Additionally, there's a new parking extension, a parcel proposed that could be an extension of Stotick Park. And I think Keith, the applicant's representative, will speak to what their proposed use is for that. And they're going to, I believe, approach the Parks Board about what the development of that parcel might be in the future. Would also mention that, just not highlighted there, but in the design for Mueller Parkway, on the east side of the property, which would be the top of this map here, there is designed along Mueller Parkway to be a multi-use pedestrian path along the alignment there. Portions of the site are designated as being within the X shaded, the AO 1 and the AO 2, as well as the AE flood zone. The applicant has submitted a flood impact analysis as required by the county code. They are proposing fill on the site. And with the construction of Mueller Parkway, they studied how that fill, how the drainage and some new improvements would affect the site. And they've submitted that analysis and a hydraulic model that studies that. And the result of that is that they believe that there will be a decrease of the base flood elevations for not only Chichester Estates, but of course, also on the site as it's intended, so that they can develop the site. And the result would also move those floodwaters to the north onto the Park Ranch Holdings property and increase slightly the base flood elevations on the Park Ranch. Staff has conditioned the change to require a conditional letter of map revision and a letter of rap, map revision must be approved by FEMA for that. I've included a map here of that that shows you a little bit. The blue areas on this map are the flood zone AO. You can see that Toller Lane is at the bottom of this map here. And there's flood zone south of, south of Toller. As you move north, you can see how that flows across the site, the project site here. And then moves west and basically the streets being the lowest areas in the Chichester subdivision. There are a few of these streets that have some flood zone within them. And then, of course, along the Decker Ditch on the east side of the property. So the applicant is proposing to bring fill into the site, as we mentioned. This was their post-project impact analysis. And I believe, again, they can speak to this a little bit further. But the blue areas are where there's a decrease in flooding depths. So you can see most, all of the site there is decreased in flooding as well as Chichester subdivision. The red and yellow and orange areas where there's an increase in the flood projections. And you can see that that is primarily along the Mueller Parkway new flood channel that's going to be created to move the waters to the north onto the Park Ranch. And then you can see how that spreads out once it gets to the Park Ranch to the north. So just to slightly recap Mueller Parkway there. In 2019, that ordinance, 2019 56A, was approved with Park Ranch Holding regarding the dedication right of way of the construction for Mueller Parkway. It included obligations to this partial, to Ashland Park. And phase one of this development will include the construction of two lanes of Mueller Parkway along the entire length of the property. And that will also include a roundabout at the intersection of Toller Lane and Mueller Parkway. Per the development agreement, the cost of the construction for this section will be split between the developer and the county for two lanes. So the developer's obligated for one lane. The county's obligated for one lane. The developer has the option to build those two lanes up front. And then the county would reimburse them for one lane. And that is the plan with the project here. Sidewalks on the west side of Mueller Parkway on the subject site will also be completed with their first phase and will be done at the owner's expense. So the applicant has submitted a phasing plan for the development. It breaks the proposal into six phases to be completed in total by 2038. The first phase that we're discussing there would be recorded by December 31 of 2023. This is the phasing plan that the applicant has submitted. You can see those six phases broken out, broken out, essentially moving most of the development from the east side of the property to the west side of the property. There are some through connections they need to make for secondary access. And you can see that with phase one, they'll be connecting through to Chichester subdivision for secondary access. So we do have findings, of course, for approval. And there are quite a few with this application because we have a few things going on. We have the zoning map amendment to establish the SFR 8,000 zoning. We have a plan development overlay and the tentative subdivision map for the 190 lots. There are findings for each of those, and you can find them in your packets starting on page 848 and continuing through 856. The planning commission did believe the findings may be made in the affirmative for the requested amendments. And the planning commission made a recommendation of five to two to forward a positive recommendation to the board of commissioners. And that was at their October 13 meeting. Would note that in the staff report, we have a revised condition that was discussed and approved by the planning commission and the applicant as well. Just to remove the language, for the applicant to provide a sidewalk and landscaping along just the west side of Mueller Parkway with phase one. And then to add that they will provide a 12-foot landscape strip and a 14-foot wide multi-use pass on, path on the east side of Mueller Parkway with phase one. Additionally, the town of Gardiner Ville heard this at their October 6 meeting. They approved the project with conditions. And their letter was attached to the item. We have condition C4 that would condition the project to follow the town of Gardiner Ville's suggested conditions as well. So I have a recommended motion for you when you're ready for it. Once again, Keith Rubin is here to represent the applicant. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rubin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I prepared a presentation too, but I'll tell you that Sam covered all of my points. So I'm here just to, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to respond.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Questions from commissioners? Mr. Nelson? And then Mr. Engels?
Sam, I was wondering, there was no mention of any variances. So I assume all the roads and everything are up to our code. all the roads and everything are up to our code uh with, is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Nelson. Uh with the planned development, of course, uh you know, they can apply for uh varying standards within the development. The applicant has not proposed any varying standards. Uh all the lots will be SFR 8000 to match the zoning. Um essentially, the the planned development, I believe, is is because this is within receiving area. Uh and a a planned development or specific plan is required.
Yeah, I uh I like the changes to this. I don't think there's anything negative here. I still feel bad for the people in Stonegate with their five-acre parcels in a very upscale neighborhood that they will be backing Mueller Parkway, but that's been done a long time ago. Thank you.
Okay, any further, Mr. Engels, go ahead.
Uh Mr. Booth, could you elaborate on the portion of the road that's going to be built by the county with taxpayer money?
So you were just breaking up for me a little bit there, Commissioner. This is Sam Booth. But I think you said elaborate on the portion of the road that would be built by the county.
Yeah, because you said that that the portion and the county was going to build a portion.
Okay, so yes, sir, I I can uh touch on that. I'll tread lightly. I know we've got a few attorneys that can speak to the development agreement much better than myself. And Tom Delara, Community Development Director, uh helped design that that cross-section for Mueller Parkway, so he can speak to it. Um but uh as I'm familiar with it, the development agreement requires um two lanes of more Parkway at at a minimum. Uh and the applicant here for Ashland Park was required to provide one lane of cons- of 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 Mueller Parkway. And the county would have to pay for the second lane. Um so the option was given uh that either the county could build those two lanes and the the uh developer would reimburse the county, or the applicant could build those two lanes uh and and the county would uh reimburse them for one lane. And so um it 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 just kind of depends on who moves first, but with this, they would be building this a roundabout and uh the two lanes of Mueller Parkway with phase one. So we said uh phase one was required by December of 2023, so three years roughly from uh this month at least. Um and the county would reimburse the developer for that second lane.
Um a- any other questions? Mr. Engels, you're coming in very broken.
Yeah, I don't understand. I don't like, can you hear me now?
Yeah, but the video is frozen and so now it's
Well, this internet out here, it 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 bars every once in a while. I'm gonna switch to my uh phone. Go with other questions and I'll catch.
No, I I I just have a comment, Barry. I'm I'm really happy to see that the TDR program is going to be used uh in the development of this project, and I was out there extensively last couple of days, and it really meshes nice with the Chichester development.
Yeah, um and Mr. Booth, uh the uh the background data said it it's going to be uh the the TDRs are coming from Claber Ranch. I'm a little bit confused as to how this transpired to the way it is. I understood that the Parks bought Ashland Park. But now it's being developed by an owner, and I'm assuming that's Mr. Carter. So has has Ashland Park been sold uh to uh Mr. Carter by the Parks? Is that what it is?
That's correct, as I know it, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, and so I I take it in an agreement that he was uh obligated to buy the TDRs off of the Claber Ranch, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
And how many total uh TDRs are they gonna transfer?
Uh so that would be, that would be the 186 is required for the development. Um the the development agreement uh discusses that the first um the first TDRs to be generated or to be, excuse me, dedicated to the uh uh 1,044 acres of receiving area were to come from Claber Ranch first. Uh so essentially, I think the development agreement was saying uh that they wanted to see uh Claber Ranch conserved before any other areas are conserved. Um and so I, it could be that um you know, if Park Ranch Holdings moves forward with development on on the rest of the land, and that happens first, then the TDRs could be used there. Uh but just because this project has moved forward and it is as far now as the subdivision map um and with a 2023 recording timeline, uh you know, it may be that it records first, and so the first TDRs would need to come from Claber Ranch.
Right, I think this is a great example of the TDR program working. I think uh the easements required then to protect the Claber Ranch are are a a huge um protection for the rural way of life and the county. I think it's a, it's a real win. Um and I agree with Commissioner Walsh on um how that meshes with the community. And so I think this is, this is all very good. Let me ask you one other question. Um if the county were to build um the road um that's required, that part of Mueller Lane, would would the county have to pay uh prevailing wage?
A- again, as I understand it, sir, yes, that would be the case, but uh if I if I can respectfully defer to uh the engineer on the line, Tom Delaire. This is Tom, this is Tom Delaire for the record. Yeah, yes, Chairman Pinzel, you are correct. They would they would have to pay prevailing wage. Anything over $100,000 project.
If if the road is uh built by the contractor or the the developer, does he have to pay prevailing wage?
Uh this is Tom Delaire again for the record. No, he does not.
So this is actually a cheaper way to get uh that road built, is that correct? Because if the county reimburses him, does the county have to reimburse him at prevailing wage, or do they reimburse him for actual cost?
I I believe it's the actual cost that we reimburse the um the, I guess, the project owner for. So they they are responsible for one lane and Douglas County is responsible for the for the remaining lanes.
I understand the responsibility. I'm talking about the cost. In essence, we'll save about 35%.
At at least.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Um Mr. Engels, are you back with us here?
Yes, um I'd like to make a comment in regard to the cost of building this road or whatever. It's inconceivable to me that the county and the county taxpayers would subsidize a developer who's going to be laughing all the way to the bank in building a road. That should be the responsibility of the developer with the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, then if there are no further questions, uh we'll uh look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll I'll, Dave, did you want to make a motion or?
Go ahead, Larry.
Thank you. Um I move to approve ordinance 2020 dash 1576 and ordinance approving a zoning map amendment amendment and planned development overlay to change 51.67 acres of a 64.23 acre parcel from multifamily residential, rural agricultural, five-acre minimum and public facility zoning to single-family residential 8,000 zoning with a planned development overlay and to approve a tentative subdivision map for 190 single-family residential parcels generally generally ranging from 8,000 to 12,000 square feet in a in area and including three public facility parcels and to repeal ordinance 2006 dash 1158 based on the recommendations of the planning commission, the staff report and public comment received.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Walsh, a second by uh Commissioner Nelson. Mr. Ritchie, before we vote, do you want to do the roll call vote and define approvals and disapprovals on all of the the um findings?
Chairman Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Uh thank you. No, if if the board is relying on the findings that have already been stated, then you don't have to restate it. It's just a, if you are, if you disagree with the recommendations of the planning commission or staff, then you need to clarify your basis for that. You're free, I mean, obviously, as the attorney, I always like a really good record, so you can go through a roll call, but it's sufficient to rely on the staff's recommendations and the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay. And um i- i- if, if I do this, go back through the roll call, I need to to uh listen to, either you support the recommendations or if you don't, and the findings, if you don't, what findings you disagree with and the reason. So up, we'll roll call it and and go through this again. Mr. Engels, your first step.
I'm opposed to this project primarily because the taxpayers of the county are gonna be paying and subsidizing for the road that the developer should pay for and not the taxpayers.
Thank you. And then I guess it's me. And uh I uh I support this and and would vote in the affirmative on this. I believe all the findings and recommendations as stated in the um report from the planning commission are correct. Uh then we go to Mr. Nelson. Yeah, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, I'm voting for this. Um I think all the findings were met, and I think it's a better project than what we had on the books before.
Thank you, sir. Uh Commissioner Rice.
I'm voting in the affirmative and I concur with the um assessment from Commissioner Nelson.
All right, Commissioner Walsh.
Yes, thank you. I I'm voting in the affirmative uh based on the recommendations of the planning uh commission and the information in the staff report.
Okay, so we have a four to one vote. Um and that would conclude this item. Any last minute com- uh comments from anyone? Okay, we're gonna move along. Does, do we need to take a break, gentlemen? Are we, okay?
How about a quick five-minute break?
But we never do things in five minutes.
I can do five minutes.
We'll take a 10-minute break. It's uh 4:18, we'll be back at 4:28. I understand. It's hard to look up. Okay. Let the record reflect, all five commissioners are back, and we'll read the next item into the record. Hope Mr. Johnson is available here. Airport, item seven. For possible action discussion to approve and accept $3,195,704 FAA dollars, FAA grant for the taxiway Z Phase Two project. Authorize the county manager to sign the grant agreement and adopt resolution 2020 R-111 to increase estimated revenue and budget expenditures in the same amount. Mr. Johnson, 10 minute presentation. Mr. Cates, did you want to speak first?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Patrick Cates for the record. Were you going to read all of them into the records, or could you discuss them at once?
Yes, I will. I was wondering if you wanted to do that.
Yes, sir.
I'll read item eight into the record for possible action discussion to approve and accept an $187,570 FAA grant award for the replacement of automated weather observation system, AWOS. Adopt resolution 2020 R-112 to increase the estimated revenue and budget expenditures in the same amount and ratify the previous award of contract to replace the AWOS to All Weather Incorporated. Mr. Johnson will be doing the presentation. Number nine. For possible action discussion to ratify the airport manager's approval of an agreement and supplement agreement with granite construction for the construction of taxiway Z Phase Two in the amount of $2,980,335.45, which is fully through a federal grant. Mr. Johnson again. And then item 10 for possible action discussion to ratify the airport manager's approval of task order A under the professional services agreement with Armstrong Consultants Incorporated. At Minden Tahoe Airport, task order A is for engineering services on the airport improvement project A, have 36, construction of taxiway Z Phase Two, and is in the amount of $445,280, which is fully funded through federal grant. Mr. Johnson. And to start this out, it's going to be Mr. Cates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So all of these items relate to each other and really are seeking to rectify one issue, one problem. We have two grants from the FAA for two different projects at the airport, under which there were three contracts let on those projects. The grant awards and the contracts were not properly approved by the Board of Examiner. Excuse me. I just had a flashback.
Board of Commissioners.
The Board of County Commissioners. Apologies. I have, I'll go through a summary with you and some recommendations, talk about how we discovered this and what we're doing, putting in place going forward. I've submitted that as supplemental material, as a memo for the record. I've also sent that to you in case you want to look at it. But just very briefly, I'll go through this. On January 23, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners approved grant applications to the Federal Aviation Administration for the Minden Tahoe Airport for taxiway Zulu and AWOS upgrade projects. The grant awards and associated contracts should have come back to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. However, as a result of miscommunication and misunderstanding policies, they were not brought back to the BOCC for approval. Airport manager Chris Johnson signed the contracts contrary to county policy. Currently, all payments related to both the taxiway Zulu and AWOS upgrade projects are being held until the grants are accepted and the contracts ratified by the board. I just want to stop there and make a comment. It's very clear to me in discussions with Chris Johnson that this was not a willful violation of policies. I think there was confusion all around. One of the grant awards even I signed for mistaking that it had already been approved by the board. So there were definitely faults in the system that occurred that resulted in this. This issue was discovered by the Finance Department when the airport submitted an invoice for payment in October. While failure to follow policies and procedures is a serious issue, the internal control procedures put in place under the current CFO, Terry Willoughby, and the Internal Review Committee IRC process overseen by the county manager proved to be effective tools to detect unauthorized expenditures. This is a credit to the diligence and commitment to fiscal integrity and transparency by the current county leadership. As a result of this discovery, Airport Director Johnson has been educated on relevant county policies and applicable laws. The county is currently developing enhancements to training on financial policies, budget development, and budget monitoring for directors and elected officials to be rolled out in the next year. And by the next year, I mean like the first quarter of the next year, we're going to put some of these things in place in conjunction with starting our budgeting process. This will help prevent similar errors in the future. I recommend that the Board of County Commissioners accept the grants and ratify the associated contracts for taxiway Zulu and AWOS upgrade projects. Bringing this forward through the board provides transparency and public acknowledgements of mistakes. The board was informed and initially consented to the projects as a result of their approval of the original grant applications on January 23, 2020. Vendors entered into contracts and performed work in good faith on behalf of Douglas County. Ratification by the BOCC will allow closure on this issue and completion of the projects. And if I could just briefly talk about county policy, our county grant policy does allow grant applications to be submitted after review by the CFO and my approval. They don't normally have to go to the board. In the case of an FAA grant, the FAA requires that the governing body approve an award, an application for awards, excuse me. So that's an FAA requirement that's an exception to county policy. That's what came forward to the board back in January. And the county grants policy requires board approval to accept the grant award once that award is issued. County purchasing policy, department directors have signature authority for contracts up to $10,000. Currently, that limit is set at $5,000 as part of our COVID financial response plan. The county manager has authority to sign contracts up to $50,000. All other contracts require the board's approval unless otherwise delegated by the board. And in my memo, I also provided you a detailed timeline of how this was discovered and rectified. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Johnson.
Before you speak, I want everybody to understand, while we read them into the record individually, we will have to vote on them individually, but we can discuss them in total. Okay, so go ahead, Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On that note, would you like to vote after the discussion of each item?
No, no. We'll vote at the end of the discussion, but we will vote on each item individually.
Thank you. Chris Johnson for the record, airport manager. Item number seven is the FAA grant for $3,195,704. It is to construct Phase Two of taxiway Zulu. As you probably recall, Phase One was constructed last year with federal grants. This construction will actually complete the southern portion of taxiway Zulu and connect it to runway 30, and also extend it north almost to the north end of runway 1634. It's actually a three-phase construction project, which the third phase we will do in two years, which will finish it at the north end of the airport. This taxiway gives us access to the undeveloped areas of the east side of the airport and will allow for future hangar development. The grant is, as you're very well aware, all of our federal grants, we have a local match of 6.25%, but under the CARES Act, the FAA is covering also our local match. So all of these grants are 100% funded this year through the FAA. That being said, I will answer any questions on item number seven?
I just have one, and that is, item seven is actually broken down between nine and 10, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Okay. Questions from the board members? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson, on item eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number eight is to accept the FAA grant in the amount of $187,570 for the replacement of the automated weather observation system. The AWOS is also part of our capital improvement plan, our five-year capital improvement plan, and is, as you're very aware, Mr. Chair, it's part of airport safety. It is the weather system that reports weather to aircraft that are coming and going. For the last nine years, basically, almost 10 years, the whole time that I've been on the airport, this has been a project that I've been working on with the FAA to get the AWOS replaced. We've had a pretty old system out here. So this will replace that system and bring this back online. This item also asks to award the contract to AWI or All Weather Incorporated. That is, has been accepted through the FAA because this is a sole source. There are no other manufacturers of this system. So that system is approved through the FAA to go directly through them. And again, this grant is also 100% funded under the FAA Airport Improvement Program and the CARES Act.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? What frequency is that on? 118.2 or something?
It's 119.325.
Okay.
You can also call the AWOS on the phone and get the weather reading, the current weather readings on the phone line.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Move on to item nine.
Item number nine is to approve the agreement and supplemental agreement of granite construction for the construction of taxiway Zulu Phase Two. We did go through a bidding process. The pre-bid was held in June, and we did receive bids on June 17, of which Granite was the lowest bidder. All of the bids were reviewed for accuracy and for qualifications, and Granite was the lowest bid. Again, this comes from the grant, and it's 100% funded. So it is completely paid for through the Airport Capital Improvement Program of the FAA and the CARES Act.
What's the status of that grant and agreement on Zulu? Are you actually moving forward on it?
Yes, actually, the taxiway is pretty much complete at this point. We've held up final acceptance. The program or the project will not be complete until early next year because of the weather. As you're aware, it's freezing out there, so the final signs and the second coat of taxiway striping won't go down until probably around March. At that time, we will close out the grant and finish the project, accept the project.
Okay. Any other questions on taxiway? Date? Go ahead. What happened?
What's going on? Okay, there we go. Just a quick statement. I guess since Mr. Johnson signed that contract without our approval, he'll be paying for that, is that correct?
That's probably up to Ms. Thompson. Well, actually, yeah, I think it was attributable to the fact that, uh, as a, a former NCO, he, he knows that if, uh, there's a void and nobody's taking charge, he's going to take charge and get it done. And I see Mr. Ingalls agrees with that, so. Uh, anyway, uh, it, it was an issue. I, I think the county manager's, uh, explanation that, um, it was caught by us and, and specifically the CFO's office, I think that reflects well on, on the procedures that we put in place. Um, and I see Ms. Willoughby came up on the net. Do you want to speak to this issue at all?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, I just wanted to add to the county manager's comments that we are holding payments until this is approved by the board and the contracts are ratified. We have not made any actual payments on these contracts.
Wow. Granite hasn't come in and demanded the money?
Well, the payments weren't authorized, so I can't. I. So.
I understand. You're doing your job.
If I may, Mr. Chair, um, Chris Johnson for the record, I did reach out to all of the contractors and explain to them what has happened here and let them know what was going on. So they, they are all very understanding. Granite has worked with us on, on multiple airport projects. And Douglas County has been notoriously quick in, in payments, so they were very understanding in it.
Okay.
Well, the other, the other good thing about this is it shows the controls that are being put in place are working.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Rice?
That was the comment I was going to make. I think that, um, I, I, I really liked the way that, um, Ms. Willoughby, um, discovered this, went to the county manager, and I really liked the way that, um, Mr. Kates handled this. Um, I, I understand that, uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, thought he was acting within his, um, scope of authority, but, uh, I, I think everybody learned from this exercise. And I want to thank, uh, thank, uh, Mr. Kates and, um, and Ms. Willoughby for, uh, having a system that actually works. Thank you.
Great. Okay, um, we can move on to item ten then.
Item number ten is for, um, the approval of task order A. Um, Armstrong Consultants is our, our, um, our, uh, airport engineer and planning consultants. We have a five-year professional services agreement with them, which started in twenty eighteen. Um, so they are the ones who are responsible for, they, uh, do all of our planning and our engineering on the airport and, uh, they oversee our construction projects, do the, um, inspections on them to make sure that they're done to standard. So, um, this is the approval to pay them out of that grant for their work on, on this project. And, uh, again, this is covered one hundred percent out of the grant.
All right, so we have, uh, four items. Uh, one is approval of a grant. Two is, uh, purchase of an AWOS system. Three is ratification of a contract from the grant and as is ten. Um, those are my short summaries of each of these items. Uh, are there any more questions from the board? Comments? Okay, then we'll, uh, need four motions, uh, to approve these. Um, any comments on, uh, number seven specifically?
I think this comes up, uh, uh, one, one, um, motion for each, uh, each, each board member.
Yeah, well, let's do it that way.
Okay, I'll take the first one.
All right, Dave, go ahead.
Uh, I've moved to accept a three million one hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and four FAA FAA grant for the Taxiway Z, Phase Two project and authorize the county manager to sign the grant agreement and adopt Resolution twenty twenty R dash one 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 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Nelson, second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? No nays. Moving on, item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we ratify the airport manager's signature on task order number A to the agreement with Armstrong Consult- Consultants Incorporated in the amount of forty four hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and.
Can I interrupt you, Mr. Rice? That's, that's, uh, item ten. We're, we're on item eight.
It didn't change. Sorry.
I can understand your anxious, but.
All right. Item eight. I move to accept a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars FAA grant award for the replacement of the Automated Weather Observation System, A W O S. Adopt Resolution twenty twenty R dash one one two to increase estimated revenue and budgeted expense expenditures in the same amount and ratify the previous award of the contract to replace the A W O S to All Weather Incorporated.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, the second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. The motion carries five oh. Item number nine.
I can't, I can't find the motion. I can, I can make it from the, uh, from the, uh, agenda sheet. I move to ratify the airport manager's approval of an agreement and supplemental agreement with granted construction for the construction of Taxiway Z Phase Two in the amount of two million nine hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents, which is fully funded through a federal grant.
We have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Walsh and a second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. So now we have, uh, we need a motion on number ten.
Okay, I'll pick it up.
Thank you.
I move to ratify the airport manager's task order A under the professional services agreement with, uh, what's the name of the consultants? Mine didn't print out.
Armstrong Consultants.
Yeah, and the Minden Tahoe Airport Task Order A is for the services on the Airport Improvement Project, A I P thirty-six, construction of Phase Two, and it is in the amount of four hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, which is fully funded through the grant.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ingalls, second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. All four of them are, uh, approved, five oh. Great teamwork, gentlemen. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Um, we appreciate your work, Chris. Thank you. Uh, item eleven, for presentation only, reports and updates from county commission members concerning various boards and or commissions that they may be a member of or a liaison to or meetings, functions they have attended. Outside of these meetings, how have you had time to attend any others? But go ahead. Any reports?
Negative.
Um, okay, and, uh, Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir. Um, just about every meeting I, I supposed to be at has been canceled or it's been on Zoom. However, um, uh, part of the, uh, responsibilities of the Nevada Tahoe Regional Planning Agency is to, uh, pick a member of the, uh, from the state of Nevada to be an at-large member. Uh, we have, uh, applications from nine people and I read all of their resumes and they're incredible. However, we each are required to pick out two names who we think stand out and, uh, submit that at our meeting, uh, next week. And, um, from, from that, we will, uh, whittle it down until we finally come up with the replacement. But that's the, uh, the main, uh, topic of, of that meeting. I know it's of great interest to everybody, but, uh, that's all I've got.
All right, words for me. Dave, got anything?
Nothing, sorry.
That's good. Larry?
Nope, not at all. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. If there are no other comments, we'll go to closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Are those agenda items where the public comment has, where public comment has not been taken? Ms. Wood, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir. Natalie Wood, for the record, I have two received so far, so I will start playing them.
Please do.
When the M U C C Y closing comments, and the day follows night, the usual three supporters of wealthy landowners step up to help out their special friends. Approving item five required some imaginative reasoning. There was no community need or benefit to the people of Douglas County, but the result was a foregone conclusion. The two commissioners in opposition who voted to follow the recommendations of the planning commission could not be allowed to interfere with the security's payday. It was completely dishonest and shameful. Maybe a few months from now, a couple of first-class tickets to Hawaii will pop up in someone's mailbox. There might even be a reservation for a luxury time share on Bali. Nothing will ever be proved, but you can understand that this is the last chance to cash in on policy.
Can you say next?
Two sets, Wade. Needless to say, I was disappointed with the decision on item five. There was no compelling reason given to approve that master plan amendment, only the desire of the owner to make a profit. Mr. Rubin claimed that finding A agreed to, was agreed to by the planning commission. Yet planning commissioner Clutz stated that it does get in the way of open space in the intent of F R nineteen and then specifically stated that the request could not meet finding A. So Mr. Rubin was wrong, and apparently none of the commissioners read the minutes closely enough to see that. Ms. Lickman said that the area to the north, the land property to the north was receiving area that would be built on. But there's no evidence that homes would be built anywhere near the subject property. She also stated that there would likely be development to the west in the airport community neglecting the fact that the community to the west is sanctified central ag. Chairman Pendle said that the growth would have to comply with the limitations of the Sustainable Growth Act. What? You've been on board for eight years. You ought to know better than that. The Sustainable Growth Initiative was never implemented, as you should know. Perhaps you meant the Growth Management Ordinance, and so that's what you should have said. Mr. Pendle also said that any determination of demonstrated need would be arbitrary and compressive. No, it would be discretionary, just as the board decides in any number of issues. When Commissioner Ingalls discussed water and traffic, Chairman Pendle claimed that that wasn't what was being discussed, only the master plan. Well, one of the requirements for a master plan amendment is that the amendment would not materially affect availability, the adequacy or level of service of any public improvement or facility. So of course water and traffic are relevant despite Mr. Pendle's claims. Mr. Pendle also seemed to state that the way to keep rural areas rural is to develop them. Huh? That doesn't make any sense. The way to keep our rural character is not to approve added density for no good reasons. He also claimed that the landowner should be allowed to build to the allowed zoning, overlooking the fact that the zoning was F R nineteen and the board has been asked to approve a denser zoning. In the end, commissioners Pendle, Walsh and Rice, yet again, found a way to approve yet more development. For Mr. Walsh, as I mentioned once before, this is why you got crushed in the recent election, because your pro-growth stance is way out of step for the voters of Douglas County. I look forward to a new outlook, look, next year with a new board. You three have done enough damage already.
Okay, that was the last one that was received. It came in at four forty-three P M.
That was the last one? Yeah, I guess the stricter about no personal attacks doesn't, uh, doesn't apply, huh? All right, um, we'll wait another.
Chairman, I wouldn't call it personal attack. I'd call it a disagreement. There's a big difference.
Yeah, because he didn't say, Mr. Ingalls.
Well, he could have. Penny Barreville could have committed assault and battery on me too.
You don't want to go there. All right. Any, have you received any additional, uh, public comment?
No, Barry, we have not received anything since four forty-three.
Since when?
Four forty-three P M.
Okay, we'll wait, uh, we'll give it a ten-minute wait here from four forty-three to five oh three. All right, it's five oh three. Have we received any more, uh, public comment?
No, sir, no more.
All right, well, thank you all. Appreciate it. And we'll, uh, adjourn the meeting.
See y'all next time.